2025 Board of Trustees Special Call Meeting to Order. Ms. Roberson, can you hear us?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, I can.
Excellent, excellent. First item is item 1B, which is adoption of the agenda. Do I have motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed the motion to adopt the agenda? The agenda is approved as posted. On to item 2A. The board will entertain a motion to convene into executive session to consider and receive legal advice on matters involving proposed contractual agreements, student placement pending or potential legal claims and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
With that, we are moving into executive session. Hopefully, we'll be back in time to start the board meeting on time.
Ms. Roberson, can you hear us?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey? Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to revine back into open session.
I move that we will come back in an open session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are in open session. As to actions to be addressed from the executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to deny on item 5A. The out of county request of family A to enroll in Lucy Beckham High School pursuant to South Carolina Code 5963480. Because Lucy Beckham High School has no capacity for additional students and there's a long list of Charleston County residents on the wait. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Onto item 5B. The chair will entertain a motion to deny the out of county request of family B to enroll in Lucy Beckham High School pursuant to South Carolina Code 5963480. Because Lucy Beckham High School has no capacity for additional students and there's a long list of Charleston County residents on the waitlist for that school. Do have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 You oppose? Hearing none, the motion passes. Onto item 5C. Board will entertain a motion to grant the out of county request of family C to enroll in Jane Edwards Elementary School pursuant to South Carolina Code 5963480. This approval is contingent upon the family being required to pay tuition for the 2025-26 school year as required of all out of county students. Do have a motion?
So moved. Mr. Chairman, I would just for friendly amendment, just to include the parents' responsibility for transportation as well.
Do you get this treaty? If you amend it, I'd ask that one to be brought up on the board for vote. And as all trustees to cast their vote accordingly. Ms. Roberson and Ms. Bailey, are you both on board docs?
Yes, I voted.
I voted.
Thank you. And the motion passes. Onto item 5D, Dr. Temple.
Motion to reverse the constituent board's decision making the students eligible to be included in the lottery for available seats at a school. The number are three.
Ms. Bailey, can you move your... Thank you. Second.
And I would ask if you bring it up on the screen and all board members to cast your votes. And Dr. Temple, if you could check the numbers to make sure we've got them correct. Excellent. Trustees, please cast your votes. And the motion passes, Dr. Temple.
Motion to uphold the constituent board's decision making the students ineligible to transfer to the application. Numbers are one, two, four, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-four.
Ms. Trudy, if you could bring it up on the board and we can check the numbers.
Let me check the numbers. The numbers are correct.
Trustees, I please ask you to cast your votes.
Ms. Bailey.
And the motion passes to Dr. Temple, third one.
Place qualifying CCSD employees at requested schools unless space prohibits such placement.
Trudy, if you could bring it up on. Trustees, please cast your vote.
CCSD employee students. Students of CCSD employees. How is my CCSD employees?
We're talking about the students, right?
Dr. Temple, would you accept a friendly amendment for it to read motion to place qualifying CCSD employee students?
Yes.
I have to give Ms. Prigman heart there.
Going back to school, although we know where they would love it because we have the best schools in Charleston.
And the motion passes. With that, that brings conclusion of this special meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Good without taking a break, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will call to order the May 12th, 2020-25 Committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Temple is second and second by Ms. Watley. Any objection?
I have an objection.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to strike 4A from the agenda specifically because it hadn't made it to the strategic education. For further review.
I believe that we have a deadline on this and it has to stay on the agenda. Am I correct?
Dr. Clamp, I'll defer to you and your team. I believe I saw an email exchange regarding this. I'm not.
Yes, ma'am, and we provided that list of courses that were to be reviewed and to be considered for the Cal agenda.
So parliament procedure wise, I, we vote on this removal or not first.
There needs to be a second to that motion.
Is there a second?
Does it violate policy? To circumvent the liaison?
I'm not sure the liaison has been circumvented because we all received the list.
First and foremost, we need a second before we can discuss this. There's a motion's been made and someone would have to second. Okay, now we can, it's open for discussion.
Alright, so the motion before the board is to remove agenda item 4A.
So it's open for discussion?
Further discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did the liaison approve B and C?
Yes.
And A wasn't sent to you?
A was, didn't happen at the Strategic Education Committee. I had to follow up with that. I did get the information last Thursday, but after review with time today, I'd like to have it pushed back to the committee.
Alright, there's not a committee?
The SE, Strategic Education, whatever you want to call it.
A question for staff is. Do we have a state deadline so that we would have to?
So I respectfully note that Ms. Dr. Clamp and Mrs. Roberts handled this item. Their strategic education is on the agenda as well. Certainly. The item can be removed, however, we don't, we don't recommend that.
Yeah.
Aren't we in Cal? So wouldn't this be open for discussion in Cal?
With the motions on the floor is their discussion. Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Trudy.
Wouldn't we maybe potentially discuss it in Cal now for it to then move forward to the board? Or after, if we feel like with that discussion, it needs to go back to the liaison and then we can do that? Would that be?
For clarification. There's really no action item on this. This is really just a report of what is happening.
We advance it to the board.
Right.
To advance to the board.
And it's really either approve the courses. These are already locally designed courses, so either approve the courses or you don't, so.
I just want more clarification on two of the courses and.
We certainly can provide in the discussion portion of this, we'd be willing to provide that for the public.
I just, for continuity, or just so we, there are times when we don't advance something to the board because it hasn't gone through the policy liaison or. So again, are we violating policy by not bringing it through the liaison?
We know of no such policy, no ma'am, that's been violated in regards to this item.
Ms. Lieber, you said you have questions about two of the courses. Would, if we bring this up, if we leave it on the agenda, would you like to ask those two questions during that time?
It's to say I can ask those questions. I would really like to see if they had an alternative to the questions that I was going to ask. And so that's why I want to push it back into strategic ed.
Okay. Is there other discussion, Mr. Hollinshead?
Is there a problem of going over what's in content now?
We have absolutely no problem answering any question about any course that schools have worked to design in the public domain for the board. No, sir.
You have, you have a motion, you have a second, so we have a question. So I'm asking you to entertain us, tell us what's in the pot.
Absolutely, we are happy, Ms. Lieber, for any specific questions that you have.
Y'all just remember this, the last time y'all flogged me and I tried to pull something off the agenda. Go ahead, please.
So is there further discussion on the motion to remove agenda item 4A? Is there further discussion?
No, we actually, entertain it. She's going to go into what's in.
We, I just have one clarification.
We have to vote on this motion unless it's, because we have.
The motion to remove it, that's what we're, she's asking to vote on.
I guess because as their strategic education liaison, am I not supposed to bring the motion that I don't want to bring because I want to push it out of Cal? I mean, so that's kind of where my.
You, you may say, is there a motion? When we get to 4A, if it stays on the agenda? You don't have to make the motion.
Ms. McKinney, was Ms. Lieber's motion seconded?
Yeah.
Ms. Hollinshead seconded it. Correct.
Alright, we'll call for the question, Ms. Bowles. Ms. Bailey and Ms. Watley.
Sorry for the delay. I'm, I'm looking over with a little bit more detail since there was an objection.
It hasn't come up in board docs yet.
It came up on ours.
I'm looking at mine and it's, it's not up.
Would you like to voice vote, Ms. Bailey?
Okay. Can you, can you repeat the motion?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is to remove agenda item 4A.
Nay.
Thank you for voting. Ms. Roberson, did we have yours vote?
Yes. Ms. Bowles is shaking her head.
Yes.
Ms. Watley, we're waiting on your vote.
And I would like to, after this vote, call a point of clarification.
I voted.
Oh.
I know. And the motion fails. I will go back to the previous motion, agenda item 2, 1B. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? It was made by Dr. Temple and seconded by Ms. Watley. So I will call for that vote. Ms. Bailey, you want a voice vote? To a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yay.
Thank you. And that motion does pass. Onto item 2A, special recognition, Ms. Denny.
One second, Ms. McKinney, I have a point of clarification.
Sorry, short memory.
Thanks, that's okay. Two things. One. It is my understanding that the superintendent can put things on the agenda that's coming from the staff side of the house. Is this not something that the superintendent, even though the motions failed, but moving forward? Is it not correct that the superintendent and her staff can put things on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, to my understanding, yes.
Okay, so I would think that this is coming from the superintendent and her cabinet to us. And that it didn't necessarily have to go through our policy liaison. I would think that our policy liaison is representing us for things that we want to put on the agenda. Not to approve what the staff wants to put on the agenda. And secondly, this is a parliamentary, a parliamentary proceed question. When you abstain from a vote, it is customary to state why you abstain. Because an abstention is saying that there's a conflict. It's either you vote yes or no. And I don't want us to get in the habit of abstaining from votes, from votes, because if there's not a conflict. So can our parliamentarians speak to the reason why you should abstain?
You know, there could be, I guess what your question is, trustee Roberson, is should there be an explanation given for an abstention? Is that your question?
Exactly.
I, I don't believe that Roberts Rules requires that an explanation be given. I think it would be useful, appropriate, better, if you will. That an abstention be accompanied by an explanation. But I do not recall that it's absolutely required by Roberts Rules.
Okay, so can you, or whoever's serving as parliamentarian, look that up? Because I believe that when you abstain, there's supposed to be a reason why you're abstaining. Because we are sent here as trustees to represent our constituents, voting yes or no. And if we abstain, that means that there's a conflict and that we cannot cast a vote for that particular item.
Well, if we're going to force trustees to explain.
It's not a force, not a force. It's not a force, not a force. I'm just asking for Roberts Rules.
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
I'm just asking for Roberts Rules.
Well, I I abstain, so I'm going to explain. But if we're going to have one explain a vote, then everyone needs to explain their votes.
That's my point. No, 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 a yes and a no, it's a it's a vote, yes or no. An extension is not telling the constituents.
We will we will look that up and get back to you as to whether or not that's considered a vote. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
No, it should should warrant explanation as well. Excuse me.
No, it doesn't. Please, please, please read Roberts Rules.
Recognize wonderful people.
Please read Roberts Rule. A yes or no does not um warrant um an explanation because your vote.
Get back to you on that as soon as we've found the answer. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. We're excited. Tonight, we have several special recognitions. First, it was it's National School Nurses Week. National School Nurses Day is celebrated annually. The day is dedicated to recognizing and appreciating the hard work of school nurses and promoting a better understanding of their role in the educational setting. We invite our school, we have invited our school nurses to attend tonight's board meeting to be recognized for their outstanding work and dedication. So let's give a big round of applause to our. I'd like to now invite them to stand and join us at the front of the boardroom for a well-deserved photo to mark this special occasion. To help paint a picture of just how impactful their work is each day, I'm thrilled to welcome Ellen Nitz, our Director of School Nursing, to the podium. She's got some powerful stats that highlight the remarkable care and commitment our nurses bring to CCSD schools.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us here tonight. Nothing gives me more pleasure to to share the accomplishments and hard work of my team. They are truly the heartbeat of the school. And as you can tell, if you call for a nurse, you get them. So as of April 30th, school nurses have seen and cared for over four hundred and sixty-two thousand kids this year. By the end of the year, we will have topped seeing over a half a million kids. The great news is that we have a return to class rate of ninety-six point two seven percent. So if you are doing the math over there or looking at a a report card, I believe that puts us in the A rating, maybe A plus, right? So we do end up sending home about seventeen thousand of these kids this year, which is a three point six eight percent. And then we had a hundred and sixty-eight transports, which was a point zero four percent. Even though I'm sending you all these stats, nursing sta- nursing services continues to push through the preconceived notion that we're all about Band-Aids and ICE. In the past month alone, school nurses have utilized a new stock albuterol program. It's been used over fifty times in the past thirty days. This saves money, saves our families a costly ER visit and any of our missed school days. So it's keeping our kids in the classroom. Our Vaccine for Children Program, VFC, has provided over five thousand immunizations this year alone. Our Vision to Learn has examined and given classes to almost seventeen hundred kids. And we're not stopping there. Next year, we're going to have a diabetic educator because we see the need that our diabetic kids really need. Our nurses need that bridge, supporting their success through the provider. And so we will also have that educator going out to our families and to our students, making sure they know how to take care of themselves so that they can stay in the classroom and learn. And of course, emergency response to health emergencies continue to be a priority. And we continue with our partnership with MUSC Project Adam. I am proud to say that all of our high schools are HeartSafe certified and we are over fifty percent with our other schools being certified. And please know, we won't rest until we get to that hundred percent mark. I hope that you're as impressed as I am with this data in the importance of having a full-time school nurse on every campus. We appreciate you and all your support that helps make this department thrive. Please join me in giving our school nurses a hearty round of applause once again.
And while Nurse Nitz is coming to the front, um, one of our favorite um sayings here in the Charleston County School District is leadership matters. And Ellen, I think these ladies agree that without you, um, they couldn't be quite as successful as they are. So thank you. Trustees, if you'll come down and take a photo with the nurses, squeeze in trustees, if you'll come together. They said that that's not clean or safe, but they're squeezing. Okay. Can you get them, Andy? Okay, everybody, on three.
All right, we go, three, two, one.
He keeps clicking. Yay. Thank you, Stolen Nurse. Yay.
Well, we haven't practiced that. I don't know. Yeah. Yes or no? Yeah.
That's the reason why I have the room is full.
Ms. Denny, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. I'd like to invite the twenty twenty-five Top Five Teachers of the Year to join the trustees in the front of the boardroom, four of whom are here with us tonight.
Ms. Denny, no wonder we have such a friendly crowd tonight.
It's always fun to celebrate.
Teachers and nurses.
Each year, CCSD announces five top teachers of the year, selected from among the teachers of the year at each of our schools and programs. The top five go on to form the Teacher Roundtable, which is a body responsible for advocating for the profession, representing their colleagues, and regularly providing counsel to the superintendent and senior leaders. The member of the Roundtable served two years. Today, in honor of National Teacher Appreciation Week, which was held last week, we'd like to recognize, honor, and thank the twenty twenty-five Top Five Teachers of the Year. Karissa Carr, Crystal Heron, Megan Key, Katie Schaefer, our T- Teacher of the Year, and Eric Wilkinson, who's not able to join us tonight. Please join me in a round of applause for our Top Five Teachers of the Year.
We are so proud of this wonderful group of teachers. Mr. Wilkinson is actually at a choral rehearsal and couldn't be here to celebrate tonight, but we are very, very grateful for their exceptional leadership and we look forward to working with you.
And there's more to come.
Yes, ma'am. I'd now like to invite the Carrio team to stand and join the trustees at the front of the boardroom. Members of the team include administrators Principal Brian Coleman, Mr. Valente, Ms. Osborne, Mr. Morven, teacher coach Cheryl McGee, Roz Stever, and students Noah Burton and Millie Zerillo, and Ms. Schaefer. Each spring since nineteen seventy-eight, SCADA has recognized a few schools which offer excellent instruction and outstanding leaders augmented by strong family and community involvement and a supportive business community. Thomas C. Carrio made history for Charleston County School District. On April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, Carrio became the first school in more than two decades to be named Palmetto's Finest School by the South Carolina Association of School Administrators. This prestigious award goes to schools that offer the best in innovative, effective educational programs. Let's give a big round of applause to Carrio.
Hey, trustees, if you'll come down. So we've been at Carrio a lot lately with the naming of Ms. Katie last week. But as you come down, we really want to highlight um how challenging and difficult it is to be named a Palmetto's Finest School. It requires an extensive application process, numerous school visits. But really, um, it highlights the dedication of the educators and the leaders at at Carrio. Um, and like we said earlier with Nurse Nitz, leadership matters and we've got some of the finest um with under the the tremendous leadership of Brian Coleman at Carrio. So thank you all for your exceptional work and for loving our kids. So we'll take a picture now if Andy can ever get everybody straight. Dr. Williams, Dr. Dr. Williams, if you'll join, Dr. Williams, Dr. Williams, come on up. You didn't think you were going to be able to hide from that, did you, Joe? All right, everybody look at Andy. Come on, Dr. Williams, symmetry. Mr. Coleman, if you're going to tell secrets, you won't be invited back, huh? Thank you, Carrio.
Yeah.
Oh, you're good. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'd like to invite Sandra Cannon to join trustees at the front of the boardroom. Miss Cannon, a West Ashley High School instructional coach, was recognized with the Jessie William Little Distinguished Achievement Award this year. The Jessie W. Little Leading the Way Award was established in honor of Jessie W. Little Winthrop Class of nineteen seventy-three, and it serves to recognize mentor teachers who offer crucial support and guidance to new and future educators. Mentor teachers play an important role in the teacher education program at Winthrop University as well as in the South Carolina ADEP process for first-year teachers. Nominator Patrick Mark- Martin wrote that Cannon's advocacy, leadership, and ability to empower teachers and students ensure her impact extends far beyond her immediate classrooms. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Cannon. Trustees, if you'll join Mrs. Cannon for a photo.
And if I could say before you move about Ms. Cannon, I've known her for nearly two decades. We've had children together. We've graduated children together, and her passion for children is second to none. But her passion for educating the future educators of this world who will impact is equally um is equally as impactful to our systems. So Sandy, Sandra, Sandy, I've always called her Sandy. People answer all kinds of names for me, but Sandy, we really appreciate all that you continue to do for the current generation and future generations. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, those last few minutes were a hard act to follow, but we will go on to item three A, the superintendent's report.
It certainly is hard and hard act to follow, Mrs. McKinney. So the superintendent's report tonight is brief, but I'm excited to share that there are so many wonderful things going on across Charleston County School District. Now, we have obviously very limited time here to celebrate them, but um the small glimpse you got tonight into the educators who impact our kids. Um, those sorts of things are going on across um this district. And so thank you for taking time to to celebrate people because it's people that make this system work. Um, tonight's superintendent. Tonight's superintendent's report features Special Olympics. First and foremost, you'll see on the next slide there that about 250 students from 17 of our schools participated in the largest Special Olympics Spring Games hosted in the Low Country in recent years. Student athletes did a lot of different things, and this short video highlights the work at Wando High School.
So this is the third year that we've done this, and it's the biggest year that we have. And so we have 18 schools this year, around 250 athletes. We have eight middle schools and eight high schools. Every year it's grown. The first couple of years, we had around 13 schools. So every year it's just gotten bigger and better. And so I know like a lot of people coming in today have been saying that they've been looking forward to this year because it's the best day of the year.
It's huge just with the inclusion push that there is where we want kids with disabilities to be working with kids that don't have disabilities. These events are just awesome for that. And you can see, I always feel like our kids obviously get a lot out of it, but I feel like the general ed peers that are working with our kids, they get so much out of it too. And like they get to form friendships and they get to spend the day with people that they don't normally get to spend time with, and it just turns into a great event. And a lot of people benefit from it.
The whole school does get involved and the whole school loves it. And everybody just wants to be involved because it's such a great day to put our students in the spotlight and see everything that they can do.
Yeah, I just thought it was really cool. Like I heard great things about it and I just wanted to come and help and represent. I loved her and I just met him. He's really fun, he's really funny, and he's just cool and great to hang out with.
I like my whole crowd right here.
So again, just continuing the great things going on across this district. We're thankful to Abby and the Wando Warriors for hosting this at Wando High School. And as an extension of that tonight, I want to talk to you on the next slide about the work. You've asked as we get ready to approve or review the second reading of the budget specifically about the weighted student funding and how we're tracking it and how we're knowing it makes a difference. Inevitably, we will gauge the success of the WSF when student proficiency scores come in, probably midsummer, late summer. But we wanted to update you on the exceptional growth in the three areas of the WSF that some of our schools have experienced. And to be clear, elementary student groups must have at least 20 students. And so what I'm going to share with you tonight is a reflection of schools that a large percentage, a large percentage of their students are making stretch growth, which is beyond the typical growth, beyond the one-year's growth that we would typically expect a student to make in order to be on grade level. And I've asked those principals to join us via Zoom to be recognized because this is not easy work. And some of them are actually here. I believe I saw them back there hiding, but I appreciate you coming, Ms. Cackley and Ms. Williams, anybody else that I may have missed. Because we allocated WSF funding because students in these categories take and demand more resources from us to elevate their achievement for various reasons. For the learning challenges they face, for sometimes how they arrive at school, or sometimes because of the physical impediments that are barriers to them. And so in students with disabilities in reading and math, and many of these principals, I'm going to call them by name, I saw Ms. Henderson, 41%. Mrs. Henderson, I believe, has the largest number of students with special needs in Mount Pleasant. And 41% of students with special needs at Pinkney made or exceeded their stretch growth in reading, significant, 37% in math. So Ms. Henderson, nice, nice work. Mount Pleasant Academy, I saw Ms. Kim Jackson on here, 40% of the students making stretch growth in reading. Bell Hall Elementary, I think Mr. Conklin was on here as well, 34% meeting stretch growth in reading, 41% meeting stretch growth in math. Carolina Park Elementary, Mr. Antonelli, 34% meeting stretch growth in reading. And then Mrs. Williams is here from Springfield. I remember, and I don't want to embarrass her, but at a school data review, two, well, three meetings ago, Mrs. Williams was nearly, she takes her job so seriously, and all these principals, all of our principals do, she was nearly in tears because she was struggling such with chronic absenteeism that she just didn't know what to do. And Mrs. Williams, that your students are improved in their, and I know they are, I'm tracking that too, sister, and that they have made stretch growth in both reading and math. It's a testament to your work, but please stand and be recognized. Those of you online, our trustees appreciate you. So again, there's a misnomer in the public about what certain schools in certain places look like, right? But I'll remind you that at Wando High School, there are over 800 pupils in poverty. More than some of our high schools have students altogether. And those students are coming from their feeder pattern. I know you see a lot of Mount Pleasant schools here, that's obvious. But it's important to note that those schools are making a tremendous difference with children that have these significant challenges. And then, of course, you also see West Ashley represented in this group. But if we go on to ML students, you see again Bell Hall meeting 62% of stretch growth with ML students, our multilinguals. I saw Mrs. Connor on here from Whitesides. Again, Mr. Conklin's Bell Hall in both reading and math. Mrs. Michelle Connor from Whitesides, 56% of students meeting stretch growth in reading, 53% in math. Laurel Hill Primary, Mr. Jason Sims, who just had a new baby, or his wife had a new baby, and he's featured on here with half of his students in early childhood meeting stretch growth in reading. Ms. Jackson again being recognized for half of her students making stretch growth in reading. And then Mrs. Henderson again for half of her ML students meeting stretch growth in reading. Laurel Hill with Mr. Sims again in math. Mrs. Connor at Whitesides. Ian James, Midland Park in North Charleston, 50% of students meeting stretch growth. And then Mrs. Cackley back here at Oakland Elementary with nearly half of her students. Stand and be recognized, Ms. Cackley, meeting stretch growth in math. And our last WSF category, again, you've asked us to share with you how we're doing. This is really significant. When a large percentage of your students are growing beyond a year, it takes strategy, it takes resources, and it takes some really good teaching. Laurel Hill Primary with Mr. Sims again being recognized for both reading and math for pupils in poverty. Again, Mr. Conklin recognized in every category on the screen. Bell Hall, 44% reading, 44% math. Mrs. Henderson, Pinkney, 43% in reading. Mount Pleasant Academy, Ms. Jackson again, 40% meeting stretch growth in reading. And Mrs. Susan King at Sullivan's Island Elementary, 40%. She couldn't join us tonight because she's with a performing group. Mary Ford, we have Ms. Loretta Hart on here in North Charleston. That is amazing, Mrs. Hart, 53% meeting stretch growth. Again, Midland Park Primary with Mr. James, 42%. And Styles Point over on James Island with nearly 40% of students. Ms. Shannon McAllister is on here, meeting stretch growth with pupils in poverty. So I want to again recognize the critical work, strategic work these principals are doing. Many other of our schools are making tremendous growth. We chose to recognize the top five in each category tonight for you. So principals, let's give them another round of applause. When we talk to our principals about, next slide please, how they do it. Here are some ways that they suggest they do it. Co-teaching, we're expanding the co-teaching model in some of our schools next year with students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and pupils in poverty. We've seen it be very powerful in places like Pinehurst. It's expanding to North Charleston Creative Arts Elementary next year. TAs, that was some of the ways principals used their WSF for extra support, professional development and coaching for teachers. Intervention, again, we try to prevent, but when we can't, we intervene strategically, flexible scheduling, and PLCs are ways across the domains here that you see principals suggest that they're making a significant gain with students. You also see that they attribute some of the work to their interventionist, rewards and incentives for students, and again, flexible scheduling that they employ to meet the needs of their children. So we looked at elementary schools tonight. We've also got some tremendous gains in our middle schools with MAP. MAP doesn't set the stretch growth goals. Those are individual at the schools like already, so we wanted to be very scientific in what we presented to you tonight. But we're really proud of the work going on in our elementary schools and our middle schools, particularly as it relates to measurable growth of students. I want to thank the leaders of these groups, Dr. Williams, Dr. Swearingen, Mrs. Haynes, along with Francine Mitchell, Quinetta White, and Jamie McCarthy, and Dr. Knower, who work with schools in a way that produces outcomes for kids. So if we can just give everybody one round of applause, and principals. Know you're readying yourself for the rest of the week, so you are welcome to sign off. Or if you want to stay in case the trustees have any questions, maybe stay one more minute because I have one more slide and we've really already covered it. Just wanted to make sure that you knew the tremendous efforts that go into Palmetto's Finest. I want to thank the board for creating conditions where schools can focus on teaching and learning, which we believe is exactly what's happened here to have the first school in 25 years in Charleston to be recognized. This was no easy feat, and we didn't know whether they would win. But we had confidence in the work that they had led and Dr. Williams had supported. And so Mr. Coleman had a big pep rally. If they'd lost, it'd have been really disappointing, but nonetheless, it was a huge celebration of the work that they had done. So if you have a chance, regardless if this is a district that you quote "represent", please take some time to visit Cario Middle School and see the great things that are going on there. We are optimistic that we'll have more schools in the future leading the way to showcase the excellent things we have going on here in Charleston County School District. So Mrs. McKinney, with that, I'll turn it back over to you for any questions that trustees might have. Thank you. Any report questions?
I would just like to make a comment. I just want to say I'm thrilled to see West Ashley representing. I love my guys over there. My principals are the best. And just want to thank you for taking the time to acknowledge the hard work and the success that that is coming with the weighted student formula. And I've been, it's been an honor and a privilege to have been a part of establishing this. This is exactly one of the things that I ran on when I campaigned is empowering the schools and empowering the students and shifting some of the money away from the district and towards the schools. So I just want to thank you and champion you for being bold enough to be thinking out of the box and to step out there and try something new and innovative.
Thank you, Mrs. Wally. Thank you for your leadership on all that finance and the work that team has done to make this possible. The work really, I appreciate the acknowledgement, but has very little to do with me, but just the heroic efforts that our principals are taking, particularly in this season. As students take those end-of-year tests, and so we'll be very transparent about the data and report back to you, but thank you for that acknowledgement. We've got the greatest principals in the nation.
Well, and I also think your team, I think that you've established it. You're right, it isn't just you, it's not just us, it's all of us together and working together and laying aside differences to come together to make sure our community thrives. So Ms. Simmons, Dr. Clamp, everybody, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
I have one question. On the slide with the strategies that work for the pupils in poverty, I am just curious as to how you, it's implemented, the tutoring services, if they're in school, out of school, pre, post-school, hours, and Saturday school?
It's a great question, Mrs. McKinney. Would one of you like to come up and answer that? Yes. Megan said she won't come in person next time. I'm going to call, Mr. Conklin, I may call on you next, just a heads up.
And she's a math rock star also.
Yes, she is.
Love math. We're doing tutoring after school. So we're paying our teachers today after for an hour, two days a week for our kids. So that's what we're doing.
And that comes, Mrs. McKinney, through the WSF. Does anyone on the screen want to come off mute and talk a little bit more about exactly what you're doing in regards to direct student support and tutoring, Ms. Henderson, Mr. Conklin?
I'll jump on really quickly. All of our support, academic support is during the regular school day. It is with the WSF support. We have academic interventionists. It is very important to be data-driven and identify the students that are showing that they can benefit from an additional support. The scheduling can be very challenging. The people who are working with the students are, they have very packed schedules. Their days are very intense. They're working with small groups and in 30-minute increments, and they're hustling them back to the classroom and picking up another group. It's exciting, but that's how we're doing it at Bell Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. Ms. Henderson, do you or Ms. Jackson have anything to add in regards to tutoring support?
My tutoring is happening after school, like Ms. Williams, three times a week.
Anybody else want to add anything? Mrs. McKinney, does that answer your question?
And then Saturday. I'm wondering how that's being implemented.
Are any of you doing it on Saturday? We know Sanders Clyde is doing it on Saturday. You're all doing, so Sanders Clyde is the primary school that is doing on Saturday. And as you know, Mrs. Malone has a way to get her families there, and she worked with Mr. Prentice to make sure that there was funding available for the tutors on Saturday that are coming in, and she's reporting positive experiences with students and families, which is another way to get families down on the peninsula and to school. Thank you for the thoughtful question, Ms. McKinney.
Any other questions?
Ms. McKinney, my hand is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Let me first say congratulations to the principals. Meeting typical goals is a heavy lift, and for those principals that had double digits or students that made their stretch goals, that's absolutely amazing. So congratulations and keep up the great work. I want to ask a question, and I'm just going to put it out there. There's not, let me just ask a question. A principal said that their success and their strategy was greatly dependent upon a great teach, having great teachers. What does that, what does that look like? Because my following question would be to you, Ms. Huggins, how do we make sure that we have a great teacher in every classroom? So what does that look like?
Mrs. Roberson, that is a fantastic question because outside of anything, class size, strategies, you can pour all the money in the world into resources for kids, and if the teacher's not high quality, then they won't make the gains with children that we would want them to make. So first, that looks like a teacher who believes that all kids, despite whether they come in poverty, despite whether they're special needs, despite whether they're multilingual, they believe that kids can. Number two, it looks like a teacher who engages thoughtfully in the classroom with children. Number three, asking good, solid questions of children that challenge them to think critically. Four, they provide curriculum that's rigorous so that children rise to the occasion, and then they do that thoughtful planning, assessment, and reteaching as needed, Mrs. Roberson. And what we're doing as a system, and as you will probably recall when I call this out, one of the board's guardrails, excuse me, is around the classroom walkthrough tool, the C- one of the board's guardrails, excuse me, is around the classroom walkthrough tool, the CWT. And that tool is in place for principals to be able to go into a classroom and assess the level of instruction and assessment around the instructional framework that Ms. Simmons and her team have worked on to provide feedback to teachers to help them grow professionally. It gives a snapshot of what's happening in classrooms. And then it helps principals provide support to teachers that they believe need it most. I wonder if any of the principals on the call would mind coming off mute and talking a little bit about the CWT and how you use it in your school. They all look like they mind coming off mute, but I see Mr. Sims, who just had a baby and wants to stay on the call longer than anybody, though, to avoid. So Mr. Sims, why don't you come off mute? Because I know how you do CWT's. Can you talk a little bit about how you use that in at Laurel Hill?
Yeah, so for us, it's exactly that. It's a tool. I think it's a tool to be able to observe and to, sorry, I've got both of my little ones here wanting to say hi.
Mr. Sims, put yourself right back on mute. Put yourself right back on mute, Mr. Sims. I saw your wife just take the baby. Put yourself on mute. I tell you what, Ms. Henderson.
I did that on purpose.
Uh-uh, stop talking. Ms. McAllister, take yourself off mute, Ms. McAllister, and talk to us about the CWT. I know you're in classrooms too.
Hey, good evening. Yes, we have really enjoyed investing our time in the CWT. It is very beneficial for us to have this as a tool to use to talk to our teachers. Many of my teachers are reflective practitioners by nature. And it's nice, they, a couple of teachers have told me it's like having a fly on the wall in the classroom to give them that feedback and to help them grow. At Styles Point, we talk about being green and growing and not ripe and rotting. So, you know, our teachers are anxious to take the feedback that we're giving and move forward. We've also really enjoyed having teachers do peer observations when we see strengths in classrooms so that we can continue to grow our team.
So Mrs. Roberson, I think you hit the nail on the head in regards to great teachers being the key lever, right? And great leaders hire great teachers. And when those teachers need to be developed, they recognize that and they help develop them. And so you see around you some of the experts in that field. But you hit the nail on the head. I hope that response was what you asked.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Grabowski?
Thank you. And this really, Ms. Huggins, you hit it on the nail when you talked about Wando and student poverty. You know, having the pleasure of talking to Ms. Henderson this week, I was surprised with the high percentage of student with disabilities that are at Pygmy. I mean, I think there's 650 students of which 75 are categorized into that area.
That's correct.
So, and it appears to be growing and growing. And I just want to make sure as a district that we make sure that we're allocating and planning ahead because it seems to be something that, whether it's just being identified better or, you know, people are moving into our area because of our success with our students. I think it's something we really have to be careful with. And I could sense the urgency in some of the principals I talked to. But also in the chance of talking with Ms. Henderson and Mr. Conklin and Mr. Whitehair, I understood that they all use their SWF money so totally differently.
They do.
And that kind of brings up the question of how we're going to be looking at seeing what is working. You're showing proof of some really excellent gains. What shows me is that every one of these principals couldn't have spoke more highly of the formula and the appreciation of receiving these funds. So, you know, that shows it. But I get a little more concerned as we start going into data to hold accountable because everybody is using their funds. And that's why I appreciate you giving us the strategies that are working and making sure they're sharing.
It's a great, great, it's a great point, Mr. Grabowski. First, we establish guardrails around the WSF to suggest things you could not use the WSF for. So you could use up, you could use some of your money for up to one administrative position, but for no more. You couldn't use the money for food, for teachers, and things of that nature. There are certain things you could and couldn't use it for. But I am one to really value the expertise of the building-level principal, having been one myself, not as astute as any of these. But the challenges in each building are so different. Even in feeder patterns, we get the feeder patterns together to talk about the challenges. And some of their challenges are similar, like in West Ashley. And when I talked a little bit earlier about Megan and Springfield, we see in West Ashley that there is a truancy problem. And we've identified that and things they can do together. But the needs of schools are so different that we want to give principals that flexibility. But the associates are then responsible for sitting down with their principals, looking at the data, seeing what's working and what's not. Because principals are then held accountable for how they're using their funds. And then in feeder patterns, we discuss the successes so that we compare notes and know what's working. Liz and Megan, for example, Elizabeth and Megan have shared ideas back and forth about things that work and don't work and have tried implementing different things based on that collaboration. But inevitably, Joe and Jackie and Jennifer and Sherry are responsible for really drilling down with principals to make sure these things are working. And on mid-year, some of these associates, and I think Dr. Williams would, and Dr. El would, and Dr. Swearingen would suggest, yes, some things we shifted from doing mid-year because there wasn't necessarily evidence mid-year in MAP that it was working. So I appreciate that. The answer is collaboration is key. We're using hard data to see what's working and what's not. Because if it's not working, we have to be honest about it and figure out what will.
And as a follow-up, Daniel, Mr. Prentice, it really seems important to make sure as we go into the next budget cycle that we start looking for funds so that some of these programs that aren't working, just because the way the formula works, it seems like, you know, some of these schools are losing, you know, spots that they had last year or this year for the funding. I might make myself clear.
So I think, I think that's probably Mr. Prentice and the general allocation based on student enrollment versus a WSF. But we've tried to hold harmless as we could. Would you speak to that?
Sure. So in the general operating fund, there was a net increase of 56 allocations to schools based on the aggregate enrollment increase across the system for FY '26. But of course, that is net against the decreases that, you know, yielded a net loss in position allocations throughout the system. In WSF in particular, we held schools harmless that saw a reduction based on their per pupil allocation in those student groups and also were strong strategic spenders of the funds in FY '25 to the tune of about $2.5 million in FY '26. So there's schools that would have lost substantially, but they were strategically implementing strategies in their weighted student funding. And we didn't want them to lose those strategies. So we held them harmless at the same amount as FY '25 until their enrollment reaches a point at which it justifies the continued growth in that amount that they're receiving. So that is one element of consideration that we're keeping very close tabs on.
That's definitely going to be the challenge of finding something that is working with WSF and then making sure that, you know, suddenly we as a district, you know, have to somehow figure out how to fund it to keep it going.
The other thing I'll share is we have built in-house a new dashboard, an automation solution for the WSF strategy. So now when a principal goes in to input their strategy, they input strategy name, the allocation of the resource. If it's a personnel allocation, they input the person's employee identification number. It brings up the salary and benefits for that person. They enter the strategy, the student served. And right there on the screen, it calculates the per pupil cost associated with that particular strategy. And then we can see the actual cost per pupil that that strategy's serving, tied to the SMART goal that they're implementing. So that at the end of the year, when we're looking at the student achievement data, we can see what the cost was per pupil in reaching that gain or potentially lack thereof if it's not successful. So we'll have a lot more granular information as we go into the '25-'26 cycle to be able to continue to evaluate as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent's report, Dr. Temple?
Yeah, I just want to say that as an educator, I just can appreciate the accomplishments here of the schools. Having served on the School Improvement Council with Ms. McAllister, I know that she really worked to help raise awareness of the needs that our students have. I can't be more pleased with the weighted student formula and the outcomes that we're seeing from this investment of our funds and the time. You know, looking at the strategies, co-teaching, we know that that's lowering class size. That makes a difference. The professional development for, you know, teachers and the interventionists. Those are things we're advocating for. And I appreciate the work that the district did to figure out a way to address these needs that are in schools that you would not expect them to have a large numbers of students with disabilities, multilingual learners, or pupils in poverty. So I think, thank the schools, these top five are, you know, great in this category. But I know that the next levels have been working really hard as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. All of our principals have been working really hard. And we've seen more stretch growth attainment this year than we've seen in past years. And so we chose the top five, but we could have gone down and really done the top 10. But you see the percentages on here are significant, some nearing 70%. So that really is making a difference for our kids that need it the most. I appreciate that acknowledgement and I know the principals are excited.
Any other questions?
I have something, Ms. McKinney.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Bailey.
I don't actually have a question. I just want to declare and decree this word of encouragement over every principal, administrator, staff, teacher, and student across Charleston County that we have the ability to have more schools that are Palmetto's finest because it's in us. And we have the tools and the resources to get it done. So I bless you guys. And I'm praying more and more that we excel at what we do here in Charleston County.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. That is so generous and kind of you. We're grateful. And with that, Ms. McKinney, I'll let these principals, I'll let Mr. Sims go get the baby. And all those other principals will sign off. Thank you all for joining us. And Megan and Elizabeth, thank you so much for coming in person. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
We will move on then to agenda item four, Strategic Education. Ms. Lieber?
I guess first I have to apologize for the surprise. I didn't review this agenda, this agenda item until like two hours ago. I'm going to have to work on my timing. Well, I don't have a motion, but I do have a motion that we discuss this.
Yeah. May I make a motion to advance to the May 19th, 2025 Board Meeting for Consideration to Approve All Proposed Courses for School Year 2025.
Second.
I second it. You can discuss it.
Now you can ask your questions.
Well, mostly I don't, I don't have a question. I have more comments. Obviously, I spent a little bit of time with two of the classes in my sixth grade son's class. One of them was CCCR. And while the career, college career and civic readiness, preparedness for students seems really amicable, when I went and did a moderate deep dive, 30% of the class was just to be a good kid and sit in your class, which is, which would mean that you're performing at a C level. And 70% was computer-led instruction with controversial issues without alternative and guidance from the teacher. 10 Alex questions per topic per week and one Achieve article. I want to go ahead and say that the Alex, again, you can cheat using AI. Alex, or excuse me, the Achieve, that you can actually, as I discovered today, that you can receive some of the answers through TikTok. Not to say that we have TikTok on our system, but if we were doing this at home, we would actually have this. I also would say that Alex, of course, is gaming. The other thing is, having gone through my son with some of the things that are on Achieve, one of those is they're not up-to-date videos. Example that there's a video.
Ms. Lieber, which course, if I may interrupt, which course are you talking about?
It's CCCR. I just, I think.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
For example, the videos are not up to date. This one in particular, it's COVID-19. Origin started in the market and didn't contest any claims to it being in the lab. And then it also promotes vaccine while giving no comparison of any, any understanding of the VAR system. And saying that the COVID vaccine actually had $1.6 million of, million dollars, excuse me, $1.6 million injuries where the other ones were rather insignificant. So I just don't think that there's enough clarification in the product that's being used for CCCR. And then I can go on, but.
You can. Since you're chairing this part, you may ask other trustees if they have questions or for staff about the recommended courses.
Dr. Temple?
I don't have any questions. I know these courses have been taught and I trust the recommendation of the schools.
I have a question. Ms. Lieber, was that the only item you had an issue with?
No, the other one was the entrepreneur class.
Why would you have a problem with that?
Again, I go back to the same references of the other thing. 18% of the class had nothing to do with entrepreneurship. And there was a lot of unspecified reading using the Achieve 3000. And again, I go back to there, it's controversial and left-leaning without any guidance from teachers. And also, it's, the content assumes climate change is man-made, driven, and urgent. And I think this is, there's no option for skepticism using some of these classes. So while I don't mind the classes in thought process, I don't like the way they've been implemented.
Well, I agree with you on critical thought being, in critical, like if you propose one idea, there should be a counter argument because that just encourages good thinking. But to disagree with you, I've actually took a contemporary mathematics class last year and I used the entire course with Alex. So I'm pretty familiar with it. It's, I understand what you're saying with some of the objections. I mean, if a child wants to cheat, there's no shortages of YouTube videos, Course Hero, CHAG, I mean, a lot of different options out there to cheat, not just AI. But, and I don't think, because we brought this up, I don't know if it was last year or the year before because Ms. Valentine asked me to, and I did, and we've discussed it, Mr. Williams, they're all remembering the conversation. That isn't the only tool that's used in math. But it can be, it can be a really good tool.
This isn't math, this is purely kids on computers. Again, go back to the reference to the research that it's better to do your work on paper than it is to do it online learning and without a teacher engagement in this online learning.
Research does show that writing helps with memorization and retention. Ms. Roberts, how much time do the children actually spend on Chromebooks and technology while in the classroom?
So I don't have that information right in front of me, but we can look at user information to be able to determine some of that. But one thing that we talked about, I think when this question has come up before, is that anything that is done online is really to enhance or be a supplement to the instruction that's happening in the classroom. Teachers use multiple modes of instruction to make sure that what they are teaching allows students to really have an opportunity to experience what it's like in the real world. So there are authentic opportunities to utilize their Chromebooks for research, for certain standards-aligned lessons and that sort of thing as well as just being able to write an essay with a pen, right? So there are lots of different modes that teachers use.
Yeah, I'd just like to say CCCR had none of that. It was all, for my son, and again, that's one school, but I think that there's opportunities using Power School to actually truly evaluate how much of the grade goes toward. computer-based learning and what the other portion of that class is. Again, this particular class offered, excuse me, not, nothing but computer interaction and just a two, teacher to supervise that children did not get out of control.
I I don't have anything else.
Ms. Jewett.
I just want a clarification on, all of these have been in the curriculum before. We're just approving changes to the highlighted ones and then the continuation of the not highlighted ones. Is that correct?
So you actually have um three categories and I don't, is it okay if I'm able to present the um? If I'm able to go through that, then I can explain some of that. I think that will probably clarify some of your questions. Would that, is that okay? No, it's actually the local board approved courses, that presentation. If you could pull that up, um, I'll, I'll be very brief, but I think it'll explain the process and then talk a little bit about um what exactly you're seeing.
While you were looking that up.
I'm gonna share with, I'm gonna share with them directly. I just shared it with Andy. With Andy, I just did.
Top one question is the, the CCCR from staff, is this an online course? Or is it, it's not your teacher would use online things?
Yeah, so um, so every course on this, this list, with the exception of the three new honors courses, that the three courses that we're proposing to teach at the honors course for the first time, have all previously been taught in Charleston County. Um, CCCR, I, it's been taught for years. Um, it's a kind of flexible structure, so schools decide how to use it best to support acceleration, intervention, engagement opportunities for students. And so it, it varies, I mean, from school to school, from class to class, exactly what um, what form that takes. That that would be, um, it's a kind of counterpart to the academic enrichment courses that uh rounds out more, you know, other opportunities for engagement beyond just straight academic support.
Yeah.
I don't think they're able to.
This is, this is where, you know, because this is where it got complicated. And I think next year, I would advise you bringing this up probably in, you know, April or March, only because my computer didn't show up green. It didn't show up any new courses. Mine came up all light blue.
Well, and actually, again, um, the only new courses that we have are um, and it's not even really a new course, it's being offered at the honors level for the first time, would be those um statistical modeling. And then your um Photography II and Photography III. So those are the only um courses that are being offered as honors level for the first time. So none of them are really new courses.
It's just changing, from my understanding, we're just changing the naming or the the level of.
That's correct, Mrs. Jewett. If you notice, all of these are labeled appropriately at the top. So on page one, locally designed elective courses renewals for middle school grades, grade six through eight, as Andy pulls those slides up. And then if you go down to page two, you'll see elective course renewals, grades nine through 12. And then if you go to page three, you'll see courses, like Mrs. Jewett just said, offered at honors level for the first time, which are Photography II and III and Statistical Modeling, Buffy said, excuse me. And then the last is the Innovative Course Renewal, which is the marching band for PE credit. So Buffy, um.
I see what they did. I mean, I, I didn't have any problem with any of the, the courses. Trust me, it was just, it was just trying to figure out what was new and what was, you know, already just in it.
It could be confusing when you have three pages of courses, that's for sure.
These are all electives.
I apologize for the, yeah, so.
I, I can see it now.
So I apologize for the confusion. I did the highlighting and um the hi, it's my fault. Uh, so there's, the state introduced a new database for courses this year called SC Satchel that they rolled out in October. And so we have to notify that, so they had different naming conventions for their courses. So the courses that are highlighted are courses that we had previously offered, but we renamed to fit their naming conventions. Because what we have to do is we have to take this approved list from you and this exact list goes to the State Department. So they read it against our students' transcripts and they say, so now this is our alerting the state that now this number is this name, or does that make sense? So so I, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make it confusing for you, but I wanted to make sure that the state saw that we had renamed them so that we didn't get dinged on our student transcripts. So that's, but.
So.
Blame the state.
Blame the state.
I'm not trying to blame the state.
No, 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 on a different.
You can blame the state, that's totally okay with us.
So we're.
We're not trying to blame the state either.
The point is, we now understand.
So are we?
And I'm sorry. Technical difficulties, we do have a few slides, we're gonna walk through this with you, but I think we're having more technical challenges than not.
I know, I think um, I think the presentation would have been able to tell you exactly what you need to know. But um, basically, these courses are um really renewal courses or they've had to just change because of the naming at the state. Um, the only courses, any, anything different like that at all, I think, would be the statistical modeling, which is based on the new math curriculum, which really is the replacement for probability and statistics. So it's, there's nothing really um, really new. Oh, yay. It's a mayhem miracle. I don't even know if you want me to go through this now, but um, so basically what you're just seeing on the screen is the approval process that we go through here um internally with um instructional specialists and district leaders who really review those courses. They look at this list um annually, we make sure that um everything is aligned. We then bring those to the board for your approval so that you can see what it is that we want to offer that's not um necessarily on the state um approved course list. The state provides us that opportunity through um the Regulation 43234 to be able to actually have a little flexibility and offer some courses that can provide things like um some enrichment. Um, I know the, if you go to the next slide, I'll show you a couple of things there. So if you look at that, um, the first, there, these are the categories of what you're actually looking at. Um, so the course list that you're provided has those middle and high school courses that are renewal quests for, again, courses that we've already offered in CCSD, some of those for years and years. Um, they do include examples of some elementary, um, or excuse me, not elementary, middle school course elective courses, like that Introduction to Financial Literacy that you see there. Um, that's really in support of the new graduation requirement um related to financial literacy. So that's a course that is able to sort of reinforce some of our um math application. Um, additionally, again, you see those three state courses that are being offered for the first time at the. Um, one of those is that statistical modeling, again, going with that new math curriculum. And then Photography II and III, which actually support AP Art Studios so that um students are able to build a portfolio. So that's how those um two courses are offered or will be used. Um, the other one that we spoke about that um has been very important for our district and has really been game-changing for a lot of our students is the Innovative Course that actually will, after approval here, would then go to the state board um for renewal. And that's our marching band with physical um education or with PE credit and it counts as a part of our graduation requirement. So that's a a great example of how these local board-approved courses really provide some opportunities for our kids that might not be there um otherwise. So a, again, academic leadership has reviewed all of the courses that you've seen. Um, again, nothing really new, uh, and we're just humbly requesting your um approval tonight so that we can offer these for 25, 26.
Ms. Watley.
Um, Ms. Huggins. We need to get a one-on-one on the books.
Okay.
Um, and and I'd also like to include that, um, if you'd go with me to um Ms. Porter's school, C. Williams North, um, the, the item that I'm looking at specifically is the horticultural.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and and perhaps even expanding that a little bit by partnering with Clemson, which is right down the road. And even going a little bit further, there's a strong request for a little barn and some homesteading.
So we'll go and we'll take Mr. Broly with us. Especially if it needs a barn. Sorry, I don't.
Yes, ma'am, we'll take care of it.
We talked about, um, um, she had me come out to the school this uh past week and uh we walked around and um she, she showed me what Mr. Broly's team is planning on and we were looking at, um, anyway, we, we were dreaming. So we would like for you to come and dream with us.
Okay, I, I, I love to dream. Mr. Prentice will include you as well, sir.
Ms. Gare, let me um just say, thank you for doing this um and having it aligned with our transcripts. I thought that um marching, marching band for PE was already um accredited course, but I think that was when I lived in either California or Virginia. So um, I'm glad to see that South Carolina is now gonna offer our students credit for marching band. And in, in lieu of PE, that it could be um either or. Now, are they also gonna do ROTC? Or is that already done in South Carolina?
So that, yeah, that, that's already um a part of the um offerings. So and just a reminder, this marching band with PE credit is actually, it's not new for us. So we've been able to do this because of your um support as a board. Uh, this is really just a renewal.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Um, are you done, Mrs. Robeson?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Ms. Bailey?
I understood it. Um, I have no questions.
All right, Ms. McKinney. Ms. Grabowski.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, on the PE credit, because I know this is big for, you know, our ROTC program enrollment. How long have we been doing the PE credit with the marching bands?
So four, four.
Four.
Four years.
Yes, sir.
Are we attributing, attributing some of the numbers drops in the ROTC because of this?
I would say, I would say not. Um, you're, you're looking at um students who are probably on two different pathways um in their studies, I would say no.
And, and the reason I bring that up is that, you know, I think the ROTC programs are just so critical and it's so difficult keeping up with that 10% requirement. I hate to think that we would create something that, you know, would hurt a, a, a program, but if we've been doing it for four years and you, you can't attribute to the note, you know, I have no objection to it.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Grabowski, it actually helps because when you're scheduling students, sometimes there's a conflict between um, um, PE um and some of the other upper-level courses that they want to take. So if they're in band, they could use that instead of having to actually enroll in PE. They can get their credit from marching band or something else and then take an AP course. So it actually helps the kids out.
It does provide flexibility for scheduling for our kids, for sure.
And, and I agree with that, but I, I'm just really getting concerned as we struggle to keep. But that's not for today's discussion.
All right, can I just finish it up? Um, I, I guess just those two particular classes just have a little bit more structure so that it, there's not the variability in between schools possibly. The other thing that I did want to bring up is during the entrepreneurship, there was an Achieve 3000 uh review of what is a tsunami? And so that is, is way outside the boundaries of entrepreneurship. So I'm just asking um that we put some more diligence in this.
So Mrs. Lieber, in full transparency, we want to encourage parents who are watching that have concerns about any courses at their child's school, uh, take that up with their school principals. It, it wouldn't really be fair to unilaterally say that CCR needs revamping at every school in the district, but we certainly will take it under advisement. Our associates are here, they hear um your concerns and will do all we can to ensure that students are well-served, however. Um, but again, I want to make sure that, you know, parents know in general, if you have concerns about what your children um are doing in school, you are their best and most fierce advocate. So um, starting with that building level principal and if you don't, the teacher really, and then if you don't get what you need there, elevating to the principal. And if for some reason you don't feel like you, you get what you need at the school level, you, you, you come here or you go to the Facebook page and post and Ms. Huggins will answer directly. So um, a, again, in, in fairness, I want to, you know, just say that um, we do believe there are CCR opportunities across the district that are, are robust, but we'll, we'll keep taking it under advisement and work with our associates.
Thank you. Um, I'm done.
May, what, may we call for the vote?
Yeah. All right, the next on the agenda, um, for B is the, I think, the K2 report card updates mathematics only.
Perfect, we're gonna take and send it back down to Dr. Gare and Ms. Roberts to review that briefly for you. Dr. Gare?
May, may we make the motion so we can have this presentation and discussion?
Please, yes, ma'am.
Um, I move to advance to the May 19th, 2025 board meeting for consideration to re, to approve all K2 report card um format changes.
Second.
Okay. Uh, so policy IKA requires that changes to the kindergarten, first and second grade report cards be approved by the local board. The implementation of new math standards next year in school year 25, 26 necessitates updating the math portion of the report cards. We did this with, for reading last year, you remember, uh, for these three grade levels. Changes are very straightforward and fall into three areas. Uh, the first is updating the strand names, the second, adding the text and content of the new math standards, and the third, updating the priority standards uh to align with curriculum and test blueprints. So next slide, please. Um, so very straightforward, you can see in this slide uh the renaming of the strands. So it's, it's, I mean, I, I'm not gonna read it to you. If anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to take questions, but it's a very straightforward change. And then the, in the subsequent slides, in three, four and five, that's just the different grade levels, kindergarten, first and second, with the new standard substituted in on, on the right. If you go to slide, I guess it's seven. Prior to bringing these changes forward to you, we sought feedback from teachers, from administrators and from district staff. Over a three-week period, we had 107 people respond to the survey and uh over 91% were classroom teachers of those grade levels, kindergarten, first and second grade. Uh, their response was favorable, they did have some positive, some feedback and suggestions that honestly, some of the stuff we already had underway, but uh we've responded to all of those. The feedback that they had, the things that they wanted to see in addition to the new standards is they wanted us to work on formatting, they wanted to see more white space, more readable text, make the, the lettering more readable. And so um our SIS uh system, we have a new plugin, uh MBA, that's going to improve the formatting and the readability of the report cards next year. We're really excited about this. Uh, second, uh, they wanted to make sure that parents understood that standards are learned incrementally, that students are responsible for knowing all the standards at the beginning of the year, that they're responsible for having mastered them all by the end. So we created a letter to provide to schools and have had it translated that can go out with the report cards. um, to explain that. And then finally, the teachers wanted updates to the rubrics, which is well underway. And so we're just waiting on the new curriculum and the support guides to come out this summer and then align that with the updates to the rubrics. And we should have everything, you know, up and ready to go, uh, for next year. Any questions? Any?
Yeah, the, I, I mean, uh, I don't see where geometry is not listed on the K through two, uh, report card. Since we've gone to visuals, I figured, you know, we'd just be talking about zeros and, you know, triangles and squares and bingo, we've taught geometry under eight grades standards. So I was wondering why it's missing from the K through 12, um, report card.
The, no, geometry is.
Uh, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, geometry is at the third one. They, I, was it? Okay, okay.
As you can see, I'm not a real big fan of moving geometry to visual, square, circle, and extra quest, you know, extra credit is hexagon maybe? And so now, you know, then maybe the following year we'll talk about, you know, how we got there when we start teaching algebra and everything, so. But I know that's from the upper above coming down, but anyway.
Can I continue with questions? Are you done?
No, I'm done. Confucating.
You used some time. Ms. Jewitt?
Um, I guess one question is, when are, are we going to see the new rubric for? And?
Oh, so the rubric, so the rubric will go with the report card, you know, so that it would say that in, in quarter two of kindergarten, you know, a, a three would be this, a two would be this, a four. And I would assume that we'll probably, it'll, it'll just depend on when teaching and learning, when, when, when we, uh, get those out over the summer, uh, and align them with the new curriculum. We have to, because what is expected to be learned and learned in each quarter kind of depends on how that curriculum unfolds, so it unfolds a little differently. So I would imagine that we'll have it done pri, well, our goal would be to have it done, uh, prior to the first progress report so that teachers have that.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess I also will say as a parent of a student in this area, I, I do agree, a lot of it has been, um, sometimes hard to read and sometimes hard to understand. I also, I don't know, it's very subjective. Um, and I, I understand it probably has to be, but I do feel like it doesn't necessarily always align with the student, in my opinion, um, as far as their levels or understandings, you know, fully. Which has always concerned me. Um, I'm hoping that this new system maybe might reflect better. Um, but throughout the years, I've noticed it with both of my children.
So just a, a comment on, um, the rubric, that is the purpose of that rubric, to help with some of that, to be able to, um, really explain what that learning looks like and what a student would need to be able to do in order to receive the different, um, scores. So we are in agreement that that process, that new process would, um, facilitate that.
Okay, and if a student comes in exceeding expectations in these, how does it then relate later throughout the year? If, if it's, the expectation is not for them to exceed expectations, but yet, you know, they've come in with their first assessments, they're, how do you, it, it doesn't seem to be addressed as much as I would think you would want it to be as a parent.
So there is a category for exceeds, um, that, that is on the report card or is a part of this, um, process and would be, um, included on the rubric, um, or.
Right, but a second grader that exceeded expectations from the beginning, how are you going to prove that you're continuing to challenge that student that exceeded expectations to begin with?
Well, that's right. I'm thinking that that would be, um, something that a teacher would be able to, um, explain to a parent through their comments and that sort of thing. But, um, you know, certainly through the instruction, that's how that would occur in the classroom where the teacher would be differentiating based on the student need.
Thanks.
Ms. Watley? Ms. McKinney? Um, online, uh, Ms. Robeson?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Bailey?
Yeah, my question is the training for this, um, for the dissemination of training and training for school staff when using these rubrics, that it will be over the summer before the, um, the first quarter of the, um, beginning of the new school year? And the second part of that question is, the parents will get information on how to discern these report, reports before they go out?
So, um, as far as training, uh, training would be, um, through our school-based, um, coaches as well as, um, providing, um, some training tools for teachers. It would not just be a one-time, you know, opportunity. We would continue that training throughout the year, um, so that we can make sure everyone had the information they need and any additional support. Um, we often do, um, like office hours as well for, for teachers to pop in and, and ask questions, especially around grading time. So that's also something that we provide. Um, I think you had a second part of that question.
Oh, about the parents, about the parents, um, well, like, when you have, like, open house or meetings during the school year, the math teachers will be able to, uh, express, um, what these different reports, um, concern to the parents and they'll get a full understanding of it?
So, yes, so the letter, um, will provide information for our families, um, as far as being able to understand what the, um, what the rubrics are for and what, uh, understanding the report card in general. Um, schools also hold open houses and teacher conferences so that they're able to talk through that. And we do have very consistent, um, data conferences at the beginning of the year around, I guess, say, beginning of the year in October.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, so that they're able to, to meet with their teachers, um, talk about their grading and their progress as well. And they can ask any questions that they would like, um, to make sure that they understand. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I guess we can take the vote?
Ms. Bailey, your vote?
Already voted.
Oh, thank you.
All right, as we move to 4C, interim goal one, reading growth targets, grade three.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, and good evening, everyone. I want to thank, before I begin, and as the slides are being pulled up, I want to thank Ms. Roberts and Dr. Gare for incredible work and their preparation for the locally board-approved courses and the mathematics updates. Thank you so much, Ms. Roberts and Dr. Gare, for your thoughtful preparation. Uh, Ms. Huggins, uh, in her report tonight, really celebrated and was able to identify our schools who have shown stretch growth targets, which are tremendous. Connected to the interim goal tonight, uh, goal one, which is associated to our, our reading, um, data, we wanted to, you know, again, provide you some interim information associated to third grades making, our third grade students making progress in reading. So tonight's information will be specifically about our third grade students. That interim goal is specific to subgroup. Within that third grade, we're going to provide you data tonight for all students and that subgroup. As we, uh, transition to the slide, just a reminder, to meet annual typical growth expectation, the students need to achieve at least 100% of their typical growth goal. And that typical growth goal is identified through I-Ready uh, as a point at which the student has demonstrated growth equivalent to what is statistically average for students at that same starting point. So each student's goal is unique to himself or herself. And as you'll see in the data, we did have a slight dip in the percentage of students who are meeting annual typical growth. We've seen growth since 22, uh, but inside of that, uh, slight dip, um, w- we have responded very strategically. We, with the, um, request of our principals, administered I-Ready spring assessment early so that we could respond to students and respond to schools and support them. And I want to congratulate and thank Ms. Huggins and our team uh, for really deploying resources in a very timely way between this final spring assessment and the state assessments that have been administered or ongoing administration already. This is in service to our vision goal of 2027, to see all students exit fifth grade reading on grade level. And the next slide will be specific to our interim goal, which is really worthy of celebration. That interim goal, the percentage of African-American and Hispanic third grade students meeting their ELA growth target will increase from 54.7% in April 22 to 58.3% in April 25. Incredible growth over time. We've met that goal as a system. And I want to congratulate and celebrate the principals and the students and the leaders who've helped create the conditions for that to happen. We certainly know there's work to be done, and that certainly suggests that we're, that we're on our way and moving towards that target. Certainly means we'll set a new target for ourselves as we enter into the next school year. Uh, students meeting their annual typical growth, we diagnose and have really drilled down into the numbers to identify who the students are, uh, where their typical growth has happened and where it hasn't so that we can, uh, respond appropriately to support them. I'm going to hand off the, and transition the next two slides. So this is the what, the data. Uh, Ms. Simmons on our team, our, our chief academic officer, is going to provide you insight into what else is happening in terms of those targeted strategies? How did we respond? And for students who are not going to meet that proficiency in the third grade, how we support them throughout the summer. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you so much, Dr. Clamp, and good evening, trustees. So Dr. Clamp queued up our performance in terms of literacy performance for African-American and Hispanic scholars. Take a look at the visual. It's, we refer to it as a quadrant report, our quadrant chart. And if you notice, the large majority of our schools are demonstrating, are showing and performing in terms of growth. That's what we want to see. And so you see on that horizontal axis, a couple of schools are lagging and then a few handful, a handful or so below the line. Those are the schools we know we have to pay particular attention to in terms of support. But nevertheless, want to illuminate, anytime we present you a data, we find it necessary to couple that with the rationale, what we believe to be true in terms of the impact and where we think the leverage is. And so I'll just talk about the first few, first of which is Vision 2027. That initiative was born in the Assessment and Evaluation Office with Stephanie Grayson under the leadership of Ms. Roberts. And we believe that focus that we've placed on I-Ready outcomes has made a difference. And so the idea here was to make sure that our scholars had the opportunity to engage in grade-level pathways. Next, you heard it earlier from our principals, the value they place on PLCs. That's where the real work happens in the schoolhouse in terms of planning, diving into data, unpacking where we should go next. And so can't say enough about that focus on PLCs. We had a conversation earlier in the, um, the day about how we move forward with these big priorities and making sure that professional learning communities remain a part of our teaching and learning strategies at the schoolhouse. And then coaching. We shared earlier in the school year that we've invested and blended coaching as the framework for Charleston County School District leaders. And so when we are observing, you heard about school mentor, you heard about classroom observations, what happens next is important. Conversation by conversation, principal by principal, the opportunity to coach for improved practices and outcomes is where we believe leverage is with blended coaching. And so again, these are the areas we believe are impactful in getting the outcomes we believe will take Charleston County School District to the next level. Uh, Maggie? Want to, uh, shout out Ms. uh, McKinney for illuminating the need to orient the board on what happens as a result of our Read to Succeed legislation when scholars are not making adequate progress with their literacy skills. And so Read to Succeed legislation governs our summer reading camp, more or less summer school. We call it summer reading camps, but it's an effort to bolster our, our scholar skills during the summer. And so third grade students who are performing in the bottom 25% on I-Ready, those are the scholars we consider to be at risk of being retained at grade three. And so our schools have this information early in the year based on our beginning-of-the-year tests. Who are candidates? Who are we concerned about? Who we should be paying particular attention to? And so the onus is on those schools to provide extra support by way of mostly intervention. You heard about after-school programming, Saturday school programming and such. And so that's the effort that we put into ensuring that we close the gap as much as we can. We also make an effort to ensure that our parents know along and along the way that their child might be at risk of retention. And we do that by making sure that there are parent conferences occurring throughout the school year. SC Ready is the qualifier. That's how we determine ultimately if a scholar can move on or not. Third graders who are scoring in the does-not-meet category on SC Ready, that's does-not-meet one and does-not-meet two. All students fall in those categories. Uh, and if they do not have a good cause exemption, we are inviting them to our summer reading camps. The successful of, successful completing our summer reading camps and students being able to go on to grade four is contingent on them scoring at least a 489 on the I-Ready assessment at the end of the summer reading camp. And so you can equate, you can think about that 489 as being synonymous with approaching on SC Ready. We talk about do, does-not-meet one, does-not-meet two, the next category is approaching. That simply means you are maybe not necessarily on grade level, but you're approaching it. You're close to the needle. And then our families do have a opportunity or provision, a layer in which they can appeal to the superintendent, to the district if a family decides they want to pursue, uh, an appeal. They want their scholar to move on. We hear those cases in earnest. We use data points from the school teams and the classroom teachers to make an informed decision about whether or not each individual scholar has the capacity, the ability, if we allow them to move on, the right supports, the just-in-time supports to ensure that if they go to grade four, they are successful at grade four. And so that's, uh, Read to Succeed Summer enrichment camp, summer reading camps in a nutshell. I will turn it back over to Ms. Lieber.
All right, do we have any questions, starting with Ms. Jewitt?
I guess my only question is, um, on slide three. Um, in the wording, you say 53, 58.3%, but then in the, uh, graph, it says 61.1%.
The goal is 58.3%. The actual value measured this year is 61.1. So the goal was 58.3, and we met that, exceeded it to 61.1. Those percentage of students that have met their typical growth for this year.
Yay, that's good news. Yay.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my, my apologies for it. I, what I, um, some of the questions I asked, um, the board or the, the head office about going into detail about the 33%, do you mind if they share that? I think it's important before we do comments.
We emailed, we emailed those to you.
Yeah, I just don't know it'd be worthwhile for the board to see during the discussion.
For the public to hear it.
Is that something I need to?
I thought it was a beneficial response.
Something I need to ask the board, or do we just get it all in favor? Any opposed?
So, Dr. Clamp, do you have, you're looking at a date in front of you.
Yes, ma'am.
Why, Lee?
Yeah, sure. So there was a question, uh, presented associated to the 33%. So the students, uh, from that slide that indicated 67% of our students had met typical growth, what can you tell us about the 33%? And a really unique, um, dissection of information. So I'm just going to go over these quantitatively, and you may have a question. And it's also been provided to you in an email if you wanted to refer back to it as well. That represents 1,219 students. Of those 1,219 students, 159 or 13% are students with disabilities, 231 or 19% are multilingual learners. 1,132 students are continuously enrolled. That's 93%. And 636 are, or 52% were pupils in poverty. We also wrote that down demographically. So of the 219 students, 541 are Caucasian students, 237 Hispanic students, 357 African-American students. 357 African American students, and 84 other. Another interesting point that we were able to project, which actually wasn't necessarily requested. We thought it'd be relevant for the communication of this report. Is that 42% or 513 of the 1,219 students who had not met annual typical growth yet in reading did show expected proficiency to meet or exceed grade level standards for this school year. So 42% of the students who had not yet met typical growth have a projected proficiency level of meter exceeds at the conclusion of this school year.
I think it's important for the board to know, as Dr. Clamp stated earlier, that at the request of our principals, and if we think about continuous improvement, we did give this I-ready assessment approximately four to six weeks earlier than we did last year. So when you're comparing the percentage of students that met or exceeded their growth, maybe four weeks earlier. Maybe it was a few more, but anyway. We did that so that we could intervene quickly in seeing where students still needed an opportunity to be supported between the time of the assessment and the actual SC Ready testing, which allowed senior leaders, the associate superintendents, whom are senior leaders, and me to sit down and talk to principals about what they needed and deploy resources. In fact, of the elementary and middle school students or the elementary and middle schools that we have in the district, I sat down with nearly 30 of them one-on-one and met with them after clearing my calendar and that of Dr. Clamp, Ms. Simmons, Ms. Roberts, and the associates to see what was going on with the data from their perspective and what they needed for support. Some folks said, I need six people out at my school to do car duties so that my teacher assistants can work with my teachers to pull students in the morning. Some said, we need so-and-so to help read to kids. So all of, all of us, Ms. Simmons opened car doors, we read to students. I don't know where you all were, and I won't call on you, but it was from the top down, everybody was deployed to support. We're optimistic that made a difference for kids. And so we're proud of the progress, particularly around interim goal one. And we hope that the efforts of our principals and those that supported our kids will help elevate our students to meet grade level expectations on SC Ready.
Ms. Huggins, I got a chance to go to Baptist Hill Middle School, High School and.
I think I did recall that, sir.
I did. And I actually got to work one-on-one with a student in mathematics, a sixth grader. And it was a truly rewarding experience to see not only what he knew, and he challenged me to know what did I know? But it was, I want to really applaud the teacher.
As far as math goes, was it Dr. Clamp?
No, ma'am, it wasn't too tough. I want to applaud the teachers and the leaders that were very specific and strategic in identifying who needed help now based on these, based on these results. So we'll see if there's any other questions you might have. Thank you, Ms. Lieber.
Ms. Lieber?
Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
I just want to say, I applaud you, Ms. Huggins and Dr. Clamp, because every time you see a problem, you see a need, you meet it. You stand up, you don't, you don't pass it on to somebody else. You get up and you move. So I applaud both of you for your efforts in helping these schools to succeed. Thank y'all.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. It's a, is a team effort, that's for sure. Thank you so much.
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Ms. Huggins, I wasn't a part of your reading team, but I do make it a point to go into schools and be a part of reading road models and help out, even if it's lunch duty, so the teachers can spend their time concentrating on other things. So hats off to you all. That's, it's a heavy lift, and I'm glad to be a part of it in my own way. I am looking at the numbers on the African American slide, and it seems like two years ago you were at the 46% of students that still were below reading level, then the next year, 43%. And now with the 60, 61%, we're still at 39% of students that below their literacy goals. So the number is coming down, and we still, we have 2027. So you have 39% of students, African American students that we have to reach. And we have two years to get there. Where I want to go, Ms. Huggins, is away from third grade, and I want to find out about Head Start. Now, back in the day, Head Start was where a lot of students learned to read, and they came up with those developmental skills. And there wasn't such a gap and a need for us to concentrate so, so much on grade three, because we were meeting a lot of those needs in the Head Start programs. So I'm wondering, could someone speak to what's happening in Head Start now? That we are, we are experiencing such a high level of problems with literacy, because it's, it used to not be that. That was one of the things that we look forward to being taken care of in Head Start.
That's a great, great question, Mrs. Robinson, one that we could spend a whole day retreat probably unpacking. And I think you hit on some, as Ms. Foxworth makes her way to the podium. I think that you hit on a few key points, the most important being that early intervention and early literacy really is critical to the development of readers early on. And, and I'd like to acknowledge for the public and state that whereas we're showing progress, it's not at the rate that any of us are satisfied with at all. We want to acknowledge the great work going in our schools for sure. We don't see a decline here in regards to I-ready this year. In fact, we exceeded the goal, but none of us will be happy until that goal, that attainment of all students reading on grade level is really made. And so I think that Mrs. Foxworth, I want to thank her for her leadership in early learning specifically. It's no easy lift. And you're right, we have experienced some challenges, Ms. Robinson. In fact, we sat down and discussed that more at length this week in regards specifically to Head Start and early Head Start. Ms. Foxworth, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit more about what we're doing.
I'll just give a brief, just very brief, because I'm not totally prepared. But what I will say is in Charleston County, we offer the full continuum from pregnant women through child development. So the way we're set up is our early Head Start starts, we have 248 students across our district that are served in our early Head Start program. And those, and as you know, Minnehues has the full continuum, and so they're across a variety of sites. Then we use Head Start to serve our three-year-olds, and we serve 480 three-year-olds in our Head Start program. And then we serve close to over two, oh, close to 2,000 in our CD program. We purposely do the continuum because Head Start, we're only funded for 728 students. So what do we do in Head Start? In Head Start, it is, it is an early childhood intervention program. But we, our focus is we want to teach kids letters and numbers and all those things. But one of the things we're noticing over the last couple of years is we can't do that until we get the behaviors and social emotional supports of the students ready. And so we're supporting a lot of our teachers on making sure that they are able to help the kids get in line, interact positively and appropriately with their peers and with teachers. That is not to say we are not teaching the ABCs and 1-2-3s, but a child is not going to be able to go into CD and then to kindergarten ready if they're still showing aggressive behaviors and other things. So we have spent a lot of time, particularly the last couple of years, with the behaviors. Now, our teacher, our Head Start teachers do follow the South Carolina Early Learning Standards, just like our early Head Start teachers in our CD. And so what we're working on particularly this year is working on a stronger transition between Head Start and CD. So we actually just got feedback from some of our CD teachers on what information do you need to know from the Head Start program for the CDs? So they're not starting from scratch, right? They need to know what their strengths are, where they're excelling, so they can just take them and move them to the next level. So I would say that Head Start is an early intervention program. Remember, for Head Start, they're looking at the whole family. That's why we do a lot with health and nutrition and all those things. And that all put together will help children succeed. And we are noticing particularly at Mary Ford, who really tries to keep all their kids, like Minnehues, together, you know, with them. That's when we're seeing some great, some better outcomes. But we do have some work to do in Head Start, but we are really working to make sure that we're meeting the social emotional needs as well as academic needs of kids before they go to CD.
Thank you for, again, for the question, Mrs. Robinson. I see Sherri Bell and Lisa Allison here too. And it's something we've really talked about, particularly post-COVID. Are those emerging somewhat disruptive behaviors of students that, you know, need more coping mechanisms? And, and so our principals have discussed this with us throughout the system. And Mrs. Allison and Mrs. Bell and Mrs. Foxworth, along with Dr. Pocley, have done a really thoughtful job this year of trying to put together and align some strategies to support both students and families and school-based administrators with the acknowledgement that, you know, these, these behaviors need addressing before kids can learn. It's on our radar for sure.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting that answer, but it makes sense.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
My apologies. Ms. Jewett, would you like to ask more questions?
I'm fine.
Ms. Watley?
Okay.
Ms. McKinney?
And I really, I think it's just a clarification, because you, you did the test scoring four weeks earlier on the I-ready. And then you've now added sport changes based on, so really that test score is just a reference. It's not a true indication of what we could be looking at.
You've got it. That is, that is, that, that, that's it.
That's it.
That's what this I-ready and map is all about, Mr. Grabowski. What you just said is it's a tool to help us figure out what's not right. Like what things haven't kids mastered? What can we do differently? Who needs more support? And when we can, if we can master that, it's called that continuous improvement cycle, then we may get it right for kids, and that's what this work's all about.
Because what I'm really seeing here is I'm anticipating on this next testing cycle that we're going to be above the 61. And what we've really, what you've just shown me is this gap is shrinking.
Gap has closed.
We are, we are.
You're correct. Yes, sir.
Cautiously optimistic. We're, we're, we're hopeful. It takes a lot of hard, so we're already at a pretty significant level, historic level here in Charleston that we've not experienced before. And it takes a lot of strategy and a lot of know-how and a lot of will from a lot of great people to move the mark. It's really hard work, really hard work. We're cautiously optimistic. Our people are doing all the right things. But the proof will be in the pudding, right, Ms. Roberts? Go ahead.
She's absolutely right, and I completely agree. So we know that with this data that we're hitting some growth, which is really important, because that's how we get towards proficiency, right? So we want to make sure that everyone also understands that sometimes it may take a little more time for some students to actually meet that proficiency level. This shows and proves that we're well on our way there.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Thank you, Ms. Robowski.
And Ms. Foxworth, you know, I see where Minnehues is on this wonderful growth and achievement. So I'm hoping and anticipating based upon your passion and what you've said, that if our early intervention is going to work, this is a very good school to be watching, you know, in the near future. Thank you.
Dr. Temple?
Thank you. I was looking, when I was looking at the summer reading camp, this is something that we do in third grade. And I thought pattern here is, you know, when we see in first and second grade that students are not progressing, and I, and I know there's an element of developmentally appropriate. There's only so much you can push sometimes if they're not ready. But what are we doing for students in the summer in first and second grade when we see that they are, that they're not progressing? What do, what do we have in place before the third grade summer camp? Which, you know, I'm just, I just know that it's not a good idea to hold back kids. And that's really hard on students, especially, you know, when you hold them back when they're younger. That's a easier thing than third grade is can be tragic. So what are we doing at first and second?
So during the school year, of course, we have interventionist master reading teachers, associate reading teachers, the gamut. But particularly during summer, Read to Succeed governs third grade exclusively. And so our building level leaders, as you heard Ms. Williams at Springfield allude to, they operate after-school programs as well as summer programs, particularly schools who have a large swath of students underperforming. We have a lot of schools with a handful of kids. And so we try to serve them, bucket or couple them with other schools. For example, I think in the Mount Pleasant area, we only have 15 children who showed up on that Read to Succeed list. When you think about first and second grade or fourth and fifth grade, outside of the Read to Succeed legislation, we depend on, we count on building level leaders to ensure that they are providing the right interventions and supports. And so there's not a system, I want to be honest with you. We don't have a system infrastructure for summer school for first and second, but our building level leaders do adhere to programming for that purpose.
Well, I'm glad, I mean, I, I would expect that a lot was going on during the school year, but I challenge us to think about summer, because I think that continuous improvement occurs over time. And so I think that is a, that's a challenge for us, is to think about what do we do when we see kids not succeeding in first and second grade? And what can we put in place to help? Because summer, because we know it's time, you know, we know that it is time and exposure. So I think that's a challenge for us. So I see you taking notes. So that, Mr. Prentice, that has budget implications. So, all right. And then the second thought is I listened to you all. I admire that, that you ask schools what they needed to help and that you were out there opening car doors or serving lunches. Just is impressive. Thank you. You should ask us too, if we can help.
Thank you, yes.
We could do that. At least I could do that if I knew that that was what was needed. But I'm thinking, we have the local program, and I was looking at my schools that I think of as my schools to see, you know, what partners they had. And I'm thinking, maybe we need a list that opening doors and helping at lunch might be concrete things that, that some of the people and volunteers can, can do. NPR had a news post today about volunteers. What do people do? And I'm thinking, you know, some people might, you know, be real comfortable reading to kids or helping them with their math. And then others might just be happy opening car doors or passing out the lunches or opening the milk or, or whatever. So I challenge you to think with the local program, because as you said many times, if we could do it ourselves, we would have done it. But I think those might, some of the things that you then heard schools saying, hey, this is what we need. Opportunities are for volunteers. So thank you.
Well said, Dr. Temple. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll use my time. I would prefer the metrics actually get kind of flipped up. And let's talk about, I mean, show us who's not achieving as opposed to who's achieving, and then break it down. For example, having a Head Start attribute to say that these, you know, these were the students that went to Head Start. Or as the parent identified them, they had another program of sorts that they, they went through. It were the parent actually engaged. I was one of those kids, what was a baby can read, which didn't work very well for me because I was a working mom. But I'd like to see attributes like that in detail to understand how we can improve the kids that aren't. The other thing that, because I think that's important, the other thing that's, and I'm looking at it real quickly, of where we're doing the summer reading camps, two of the top two schools who have the challenge with the reading, they're not at this, these schools. The summer camp isn't there. And so if we do want to have, unless for some reason the data shows up that says that the. shows up that says that the 344 are those students moving to the summer camp. But I think it's probably important to be at your local school.
So, so it's a, it's a puzzle piece, working alongside, uh, Mr. Burroway's team in terms of who has summer work happening to their facility, who has other programming. And so what we try to do is outside of building repairs and facility repairs, some schools have existing programs that won't allow us to house our program there. We're looking to make sure geographically we're representing schools where we can, like I said, pair, match schools in tandem in close proximity. And so the goal would be to have a location as many places as we can. Um, but we try to mix and match as best we can, Ms. Lieber.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I'd love to see the, this next year, more of the questions, turning on the report versus just the success, you know, the success. And even if there's some grand successes, it'd be nice to even fun to highlight some of those. Like, oh, my gosh, we had 5% that were like eighth grade reading. That'd be, you know, that'd be things to share, be fun to share. And with that, we conclude that.
Now, I just, I have my hand out.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to follow up with your question. Looking at the list, the closest, um, um, summer reading camp to, um, students in District 23 and District 9 is on James Island.
That's a haul. That's, that's bad.
So is that something, you know, what's going to happen to students in District 9 and District 23?
They're gonna, uh, they're going to be transported to the closest site, um, for this year. Now, from year to year, we do change locations. We have traditionally had a site at E.B. Ellington in the past so that all of scholars in the 23 areas could situate themselves there. But it didn't work out for us this year, Ms. Roberson.
So students from Edisto will have to go to James Island?
Springfield.
There is one at, um, the Montessori can, can, no, never mind.
Springfield, West Ashley, Ms. Roberson.
Okay.
So just following up, there is transportation provided.
Lunch, uh, and transportation's provided. Breakfast, lunch, and transportation's provided.
Ms. Roberson, we'll, we'll look in, we'll look into District 23 just to confirm. I think there are some things going on.
Ms. Williams, sorry to interrupt you, but would Charleston County be willing to, um, come alongside of us? And if they have some facilities out in the more rural areas or, or community centers where we could host it there?
We'll look more into it, Ms. Watley, and see. Not a bad idea. Not a bad idea.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
What incentives do we give, um, to the parents or the children that wouldn't ordinary go to, ordinarily go to the summer reading camps? I mean, do we, as a district, provide free books, simple readers for the kids when they come?
You're asking, do we provide books, Ms. Bailey?
No, I'm asking, what are the incentives do you, uh, uh, do we as a district provide the families?
So with this, with this particular program, it's required for promotion. And so incentives take the form of enrichment and making it as appealing, as engaging as possible in terms of having community partners come in for field trip opportunities, extended learning experiences and such. And so in terms of incentives, I will say it is a challenge as the summer progresses to ensure that kids show up every day. And so it's required for going to the next grade. So parents are usually motivated to send their children. Uh, and so that's how that works.
Okay. But do they, do, do they get books to take home during the summer reading program, like free books?
Yes, absolutely.
And I'm sorry, my last question is, um, Ms. Simmons, what is a good cause, um, cause exemption?
Sure. Very good question. We have about five good cause exemptions that will allow a scholar to be promoted. First of which is their ML status, their multilingual status, students with IEPs, students who have been retained before. I think it was Dr. Temple who said, I don't believe in retention. Most educators don't. Uh, but this is a requirement. This is a law. The idea would be to ensure that you're doing something different, more additional, if you're going to retain a child. And so those good cause exemptions are grounded in their background, more or less.
Okay. It's not that they have summer vacation and they can't attend.
Or no.
Okay.
Not at all. Not at all. It's, it's related to their academic performance or some type of, uh, pa, past history they've exhibited or their status in terms of IEPs, individualized education plans, and their ML status and such.
Okay. Thank you.
Roberson, as Ms. Simmons indicated earlier, this year, the laws changed in that students' spring iReady, um, serves as the baseline. Then they have to take an end of session, um, test in order to be promoted. Uh, and so we'll be following that carefully, particularly in grades three, in grade three.
Uh, thank you, Anna. We're need to move on to the next agenda.
Do we need to vote on that?
It's information.
Is it? Okay.
Um, thank you, Ms. Lieber. We will move on, um, to audit and finance, um, agenda item five, Ms. Watley.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. Uh, sorry, I have some notes I want to pull up. Good evening, everybody. Um, as I start my report for the board, um, I just, I'll start with, um, basically saying, uh, to, I, I chaired this meeting a little bit differently than the way that they've been done before. I want to thank Ms. McKinney for the candid conversation and the great idea to, um, move the structure of the committee to a sitting arrangement that's more of a committee, uh, structure. Um, I wanted to bring our experts, our leaders in, in the community, their business experts in closer with the hopes of, um, um, provoking more of face-to-face and robust conversation. And I definitely feel like it, it, um, achieved that. We got a lot more feedback from, um, some of our community experts um, to help us with, uh, the recommendation for the second reading of our budget. Um, I'm going to start with that item, um, as I go through a brief run-through of the different things that we covered. Um, uh, the CFO brought for us some minor adjustments to the budget. And there was a great, robust conversation, um, from our community experts, uh, in deliberation about various items, um, that are included in our budget. But I want to touch on some highlights about the great aspects of this budget that are unprecedented. Um, first of all, we are already, uh, the highest paid district in the state when it comes to our teachers. And I also want to commend last year, the board's, um, initiative to bring, uh, support staff up to 100% market value. Um, so we will continue that. And then also the recommendation to increase teacher pay to that 65,000 mark, um, from steps one through four. And then from five onward, uh, an additional 4,000 increase. Um, it, we're also looking at, and that, that, I just, let me back up before I move on to the next point. And, uh, so we'll go from the top paid district in the state to the top paid, if not one of the top paid in the southeastern region, making us very attractive, uh, nationwide and perhaps even international for, uh, to recruit the very best and to CCSD. I'm very proud of that. And then also we are, um, including an increase in classified pay. And we're increasing, uh, classroom support for disadvantaged pupils through the weighted student formula. Um, we are decreasing the employee after-school care cost, I think by 50%. And we are increasing the employee daycare. Um, I, the creation and passage of a budget prior to June is unprecedented. So that's another thing that, I, I remember, uh, Dr. Temple, you were in Ms. McKinney and Mr. Grabowski and Ms. Bailey and Ms. Roberson, our first year on the board, we were very late getting to the budget in the process and it was very stressful. So I, I really want to commend our CFO for expediting the process and streamlining the, the district fiscally and, um, cleaning things up and bringing initiatives and the, the visual graphics that are now included. And one more item that I think is definitely worthy of, um, is, is the, the budget book. Did you all enjoy your budget books? I mean, that was awesome. I, it, you know, I know myself and Mr. Grabowski, since we've been elected, there were items that, like, we really wanted to know the, the line items and vendors and demographic breakdown and, uh, all the things, um, Mr. Prentice included in our budget books. And, um, I believe when we go up for the national award for that book, that we're going to win.
We do too.
So it's, uh, uh, but yeah, the, the tweaks that, that were made were minor and there, there wasn't anything negative that was changed. If, um, and Mr. Prentice can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was actually, um, a positive change. Um, just with a couple of the numbers from, I think, the state. Um, do you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. So the, the net appropriations didn't change, but we, um, received some information late in the process that there was a proviso amendment being inserted by the House to change the weighting factor for, um, charter schools from 0.65 to 0.35, which would, um, shift the funds from the recurring $112 million, um, increase in the state budget to K-12, um, you know, districts versus the charter districts. And so it was about a $700,000 adjustment in revenue for CCSD. Um, and we'd been erring on the side of conservatism. So we didn't feel, you know, given that small amount to adjust the actual budgetary appropriation um, and change the, the fund balance, but we have that information for reference in terms of projecting revenue for the year.
Thank you. And then, um, so I wanted to lead with the thing that I think we're all most excited about. Uh, and then the other items that we had was, uh, Head Start, early Head Start. Uh, their financial report came before us. Um, we have another reallocation request and that's going to be, um, some, some restroom, uh, Angel Oak has had a, a, a transition and then another transition. And so their restrooms had been converted into like, uh, closet space and now are being converted back to restrooms. Um, some flooring needs to be done at Angel Oak. Um, some more funding for St. John's Athletics, uh, technology, infrastructure, uh, student mobile, mobile devices and, um, some program contingencies. And then we also have the, um, item for the Laura Brown packet, uh, which is the robotics for the schools. Um, and then we, well, this is, this is definitely worth highlighting. Uh, we also had our, um, internal audit results from the technology. I don't know about you, um, but if you've gotten some of those test emails, um, to, to test you on your ability to pick up on phishing schemes and things like that. I, um, I've, I've challenged IT to up their game on that one. Um, and so then with that, we had the information items from the Capitol Project's internal audit. Uh, there was also a request from Ms. Stamp, uh, for follow-through and, and, uh, follow-up on the audit action plan, uh, to keep the board updated as to, uh, the actions. And, um, and, and after the action plan has been carried out, what the results were. Uh, other than that, um, that's pretty much, uh, all of the action items that, that, um, well, you know, we're voting to move towards the, the regular board member, uh, the regular board meeting. Um, and so, yep, with that, um, I'd like to open it up for discussion. Did you have something, Ms. Stewart?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of documents here.
Yeah.
You know, we're not allowed to ask any other time, so.
Oh, yeah, no, this is definitely the time. So, um, Mr. Prentice is prepared to.
Do I only get two minutes for all of these documents? Or do you get, are we going to go through each document and have a certain amount of time per document?
Um, I'm okay. I would be okay with opening up the time, but, uh, that, that's policy constrained. So that would be something that the board would have to vote on. Um.
And I might also add, if you have questions after your time is up, you may certainly email them. Or, and you may email them ahead of time as well.
And I'll say too, the action items that are going to the board meeting, um, since they were all recommended by Audit and Finance, they wouldn't be discussed at this level, but there would be an opportunity for two minutes of discussion on each item following a motion for approval at the board meeting next Monday. Um, but on the information items, if there's any particular questions, I'm happy to, to entertain any of those. Um, Ms. Watley summed it up, uh, pretty well. The, uh, the internal audit, uh, information is pretty straightforward. I will caveat that the IT audit was presented, um, with recommendation from legal counsel and executive session, uh, due to some of the cybersecurity elements baked into that. And, uh, we'll provide the follow-up actions, um, to the board via attorney-client privilege email as those are taken care of. And I'm happy to discuss them offline as well.
I, I, then thank you for that because I completely meant to bring that out, element up as well. Um, Mr. Prentice, are we going to actually do an executive session for the board at the regular board meeting?
So we, we could, um, but it was information only and we did include the document and executive content on this item. Um, those elements were, were pretty self-explanatory. And as you mentioned, you know, phishing testing, um, as an example of one of the things that we're doing now throughout the system to try to make sure that our employees are getting a greater, uh, experience of the cybersecurity threats that they face.
And key factor authentication.
I, I'm not sure that there would be a, a much discussion beyond that. But again, happy to take questions from anyone offline, um, on the nature of that report. All the other internal audits will be presented in open session, um, and, and can be observed by the public. That one just in particular because of some of the cybersecurity elements that were discussed. Um, we, we felt that it needed to happen behind closed doors as to not put that information out of the public.
And, and Mr. Prentice, more to, I think where Ms. Stewart is wanting to go with this, there, there are elements of, of conversation regarding like the budget and, and some of the other action items that I feel there's a sentiment from the board to have a public discussion about rather than offline. It, in my, is my assertion, yeah, yeah.
And, and that with the budget, because that's one of the action items, since it was a recommendation from the committee, uh, to the board, the way the policy, uh, works, that anything that has a positive recommendation from the committee goes straight to the board and is just advised at Cal that it was recommended. And so that discussion could happen, uh, when the action's brought up for vote.
Right. But I, I think the, the, the expression is, um, two minutes isn't enough for each board member to have, um, the robust nature of the conversation they want to have. Um, so perhaps maybe if we could, if it's okay with the rest of the board, maybe 45 minutes before the board meeting where, uh, we could just have that conversation. So there's not a, a frustration among board members not being able to have that public conversation.
So.
That's not within my authority to call. That's between the chairman and.
I, I really think, and I think all members have taken advantage of this.
I, I've done about seven hours of one-on.
I was just going to say, the one-on-ones are definitely the way to go. And, and to, to take off something that, uh, Ms. Watley stated, all board members should watch this Audit and Finance meeting because the experts on this, the current committee members on this experts, they have a wealth. It's, it's the, probably the strongest committee I've ever seen of understanding the stability of revenue collection during a recession. And the reason I bring that up is this budget, the critical part of this budget are the projections that, that the CFO and the superintendent and the staff, if you had heard the comments by the committee members, this was the strongest recommendation for a budget that I have ever seen because of those projections and the concern that we're giving these raises and the sustainability of these raises against the projected revenue collections in a downturn. And if you can hear what these committee members said and their vast, you know, I mean, it, it's incredible who's on this committee, but you will be a rest, I mean, I'm just, I'm.
Talking about this.
Yes.
I'm not talking about this. I'm talking about the, the seven, eight documents that we were asked to move forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was just talking about the budget. Absolutely. I'm sorry. Right.
I'm comfortable with this.
Great.
This is great. This is amazing. I have questions on these documents that we, you know, we were told to go through.
Right. And that's handled at the board meeting.
Okay.
The.
I guess I will ask them at the board meeting.
The, the, I think it would be appropriate if it's the will of the chair for the information items to be discussed at any level here, uh, that being the capital programs, internal audit, monthly financials.
But Ms. Stewart, even, even on those ones that were, you know, i- if you feel you need more than two minutes, I, I still would highly recommend, you know, going one-on-one with, um, the CFO because it just.
Right. But then the public doesn't hear these questions and then, you know, and these are based on, you know, phase four, phase five, things that the public might want to know. So that, that's my only concern. And I'm happy to take it offline, but I also feel like this is when we're supposed to be asking these questions that we might have that the public also might have.
Can I also?
We, we're happy to, we're happy to entertain. As Ms. Stewart suggested, there are four information items listed here, the capital projects, internal audit, the monthly capital projects report, financial report and purchases in greater than 250. Um, we're happy to talk about those, Mrs. Jewett, and follow up with the action items at the next board meeting. If, if you want to go ahead and ask those, I, we're certainly open to that at the will of the chair.
I can wait till the next board meeting.
No, 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 no. Let's do the information items now. Anything, and, and then the action items, the night of the board meeting next Monday, if that's okay. So go ahead, Ms. Jewett, if, and ask away.
Head start is tonight or?
That's action for next, the next meeting. So, um, action, so Head Start, the reallocation, Laura Brown, the Audit and Finance meeting schedule and the second reading of the budget are action, but all the others are info.
Yeah, I think all the ones that, to her point, that have attachments are all action items, which is what she has the questions and I shouldn't speak for you, but I'm trying to act as translator. Yeah, that, all of those are action items. So that's what she's wanting to address.
Is there anything specific to the internal audit, the monthly report for capital projects, the monthly report for the GOF, for the purchasing contracts over 250?
With the regard to the Head Start, early Head Start, um, there are.
That's for the board meeting.
Okay.
That was on the action.
Wait. Um, Angel Oak, what is student mobile devices?
That's all.
That's action as well.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. All of the attachment items that she wants to talk about now are, are action.
Okay. Yeah, that, if, if on the item itself, there's a breakdown between action and information. So the, the policy says that the action items are referred, um, with a positive recommendation to the board. If the recommendation from Audit and Finance was not positive, then they would come to committee as a whole for a recommendation to the board. But in this case, they all were affirmative, uh, action from the, uh, the committee. But then the info items essentially end here at the committee, um, and wouldn't be brought forward to the boards. That's like what Ms. Segans was referring, that those could be discussed and we can go into any detail on those particular items.
The Audit and Finance or the Audit, Internal Audit presentation.
Yes, the Internal Audit Presentation, um, the monthly reports for capital projects and the GOF, and then the purchases and contracts over 250.
Yeah, I think what's confusing here is with all these attachments is maybe we need the attachments that relate to the action items go with the action items and any information item attachments go with them because it's just.
Like perhaps a hyperlink in the description.
That's, I think that's what's confusing is which of these go with what.
Right. You have to like search.
And the names are all consistent.
That's a good point, Dr. Temple. We will, we will do our best, Mrs. Tolbert, we'll work with Mrs. Tolbert and Mr. Prentice's office to try to hyperlink them right beside. Um, I think the capital projects report, which is an information item, has an attachment. I think the monthly capital programs report has an attachment and they're near the bottom. The monthly financial report, um, also looks like it has an attachment. And then the purchases greater than 250 are linked on that dashboard. So we'll do that so that it's a little easier next time um, to link exactly the information items to the attachments and likewise the action items too.
And Ms. Watley, if I may, I mean, I cannot stress, I mean, that Audit and Finance meeting was three hours long.
It was lengthy.
It was long and, and granted, and it was very robust. And granted, the first two hours were on the budget. Um, but all those other items with their attachments were robustly discussed. So it's kind of like one of those things. That's why you have an Audit and Finance Committee, you know, with the hope that, um, uh, at, at the board meeting, you would finalize the questions for the final vote. And understanding that you do have the opportunity to always come in and have a wonderful chat with the CFO, which is always fun.
Ms. Lieber?
Yeah. I mean, so I, I want to just suggest or say, you know, I believe that we should be asking questions about the budget so the public can answer those questions, provide a public comment, but then also debate between us whether we agree or disagree on something and a two-minute comment to agree or disagree is just is very limiting. And I, I, I think that we, we do ourselves injustice by giving ourselves two minutes, but.
But I think if you look at the budget process when it starts again in September, uh, I think we just, I mean, uh, I got granted, you both were elected in November, so you came in.
Mr. Grabowski, if I may, um, in, in years past, when we've, um, had budgets come up, uh, during our workshops, we've had very robust conversations as board members, and that's something we didn't do this year. We had budget workshops, but there wasn't conversation that surrounded it. And I think that maybe if we perhaps go back to that, um, next budget cycle, it may alleviate some of the frustration I'm hearing from fellow trustees.
No, I, 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 I sense it too, but I, I still think if we follow our process, you know, going forward, I think you'll have a better understanding next year as we're building next year's budget, you know, how this whole thing works. And because when we get to this point, I mean, we're at the end of the day. So it really comes down to, are we going to give raises? And do we have the proj, are our projections solid enough to sustain those raises, you know, for the life of our school district? And that's really, when you looked at the discussion at the Audit and Finance meeting, that was the major part of the discussion. It wasn't the nuts and bolts of a lot of these items. Because a lot of these items, and this may be something for consideration in the future, you know, having various departments come in and defend it because sometimes that's where I, I sense the frustration is, is that looking at strategic ed and looking at the education, you know, department or the bill, you know, capital gains department, you know, maybe much earlier on in the January session, having that ability on the workshops is Ms. Watley recommends, so you can really get into the weeds. But at this point, where we are today, it really comes down to the 80% of the budget, which is the raises, you know, changes. And are our projections, are we right that we have the revenue to sustain that in the future? And that's where I saw for the first time ever, for the first time ever, the committee right across the board said this was the strongest budget they had seen.
Well, and if, if I may, our, our goal was never to smolder discussion in the workshops, of course. We tried to schedule them so that there could be thoughtful discussion. And like Mr. Prentice said, I think we've held more small groups than one-on-ones this season than we've ever done in the past with trustees. We started Google Docs, tried to answer questions via email, invited trustees in. Um, and whereas I certainly value the, the public dialogue, um, you know, the budget workshops that we had would, would have been the place for that. Uh, Mr. Prentice, you may, you may disagree with that, but we're certainly open to feedback on how we might, um, you know, do things, um, better.
I, I, I know this, we're kind of out of.
Lieber.
Out of turn, but you know, even, even having a discussion about giving teacher raises, I mean, I, whereas I have an opinion that, that isn't open for, it, we don't seem to be discussing it. And that, again, I, I've got a whole speech planned, but it's all positive. But I mean, it, it's worthwhile to, for us as a board to present for, against, or even concerns. You know, one of my concerns that came up through mitigation of, um, the budget is maybe our contracts need to have, like, in case of a downturn, we don't plan on doing layoffs. We want to do, you know, we want to back out some of the, the, um, schedule. I mean, but we don't get those kind of conversations.
Because we're not for it.
Well, no.
As I was saying, this.
It doesn't even have to be at the committee. It, that actually would be a very appropriate conversation during budget workshops, which is what I was, and that's what we've done years past. We just, for whatever reason, during our workshops this year, didn't, um, have that space for the board as a whole.
But, but I still think if you look at the Audit and Finance Committee meetings building up to where we are right now, a lot of your issues were addressed very, very strongly and, and deeply, especially on the sustainability of the projections. I mean, they were taken, the projections were really dissected with a lot of comments coming from people that had a lot of great information, you know, from that committee's expertise.
Experience of, it running multi-million.
But I do agree with you, you know, the discussion regarding raises and everything, uh, uh, you know, it's one of those, you know, topics that.
For mitigation plans, you know, it's, it's a great budget, but knowing.
But I'll, I'll give you an example. You know, in our first year, what, 28 models?
I remember that.
28 models.
It, it got a little nuts.
I want to see every variation of a race. Go to that year.
Yeah, we did that.
So that's, you know, but I, I just think, you know, I just can't stress the Audit and Finance meetings, but then I do agree with Ms. Watley and I can, I see the concerns. I think we, next year, we possibly should do the, you know, workshops, you know, earlier in the fall and then go deeper into the low, not the big numbers that we're talking about right now that affect this budget.
Yeah, I think, I think next year, um, we should definitely give space for trustees to be able to dig in and chew, because they're, they're wanting to exercise their, I guess, rights as elected officials, as representatives of their area. And, you know, we've got a lot of very smart women on this board. You know, women, we, we have to, true, but we have to have our 40,000 words a day, you know, and, um, we, we, we've got a lot of board members who like to examine things. So I, I certainly don't have the heart to deny, um, anyone that, that right. But, um, it's, and I don't think that it's at the committee level. I think it's here in the board because most people are watching the board meetings anyways. So, um, I think this is the, the right place to do it. Um, and I, I empathize with the frustration that they're expressing. But, um, Dr. Temple, did you have anything?
No, I just, uh, you know, I think it's really helpful to listen to the Audit and Finance Committee meeting because the conversations among, um, people that we've selected who have expertise is robust. Um, the only thing I would suggest, um, and I've said this before, is that if we as a trustee are listening in, that there might be an opportunity for us to ask a question at that time or comment. I do believe that public comments or our comments are important. Um, I really do appreciate that staff has been willing to confer with us when we, when we've had a question. Um, so I appreciate that.
Ms. McKinney, did you have anything? Ms. Bailey? And Ms. Roberson?
No, I don't have anything. Um, and I don't have any concerns. Um, this is my third budget and it's, I, I said to Mr. Prentice, um, today that this was, um, a very good budget, um, and very easy to follow. Um, I would just caution the bo, the board that, um, our, some of our concerns and what I'm hearing, it, it seems like it's on the operational side. Um, and so I just think that we should pay attention to whether our concerns, not that we can't ask it, but a lot of what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's mostly operational. So I don't know if Mr. Prentice could maybe draw a dividing line as to, you know, what's operational and what's not. Uh, because there's, you know, as Mr. Grabowski said, as the year begins, we are approving things and items that goes into the budget. Um, and so when it comes to us at this level, there are things that's already approved and they're, and they're just putting it where it should go. Um, but, um, anyway, I, I don't have any questions. This was a, um, very easy, um, very easy, um, look for me and I appreciate the work of the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, I too, listen to the committee meetings and it's very helpful. A lot of questions are asked, the thoughtful questions during the committee meetings, um, that answers a lot of the questions, um, that I would normally have during the board meeting. So thank you all for a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Roberson. Ms. Jewett, do you have anything else?
No, because I can't even figure out which document goes with which section. Let it be.
We'll do better on that, Ms. Jewett.
I, I have just one thing. I mean, the way we vote on this budget is significant. And again, going to back to the two minutes does not give the public the opportunity to see why I voted on something like a speech to give the teachers raises. I might, that might be a two-minute long speech or a one-minute long speech, and I don't get the opportunity to talk about the rest of the budget that I might have concern with. So I just really emphasize that we need more than just two minutes to vote on something so significant.
Um, anybody else have anything? Okay, I, um, well, we will discuss further at the regular board meeting. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Sure.
We are now on to item 6A, proposed board meeting schedule for 2025, 2026. Ms. Denny?
Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. So trustees, you have attached to board docs our proposed schedule of board meetings for the 25, 26 calendar year available for questions as you have them.
And, and I apologize, I should have said, I moved to advance to the May 19th, 2025 board meeting for consideration to approve the schedule for the 2025, 26 board meeting dates from July 2025 through June 26. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dr. Temple. Ms. Denny? I had the budget on my mind.
Thank you. So the board meeting schedule. I'm sorry, what was, what was the motion?
We, we are on 6A with the board meeting schedule.
Thank you.
And I have no questions. Does any?
I'm available for any questions.
Ms. Bailey or Ms. Roberson, any questions on that schedule?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Oh, sorry. So I do see here, there's March 9th, a budget workshop and April 13th, a budget workshop, but we don't have any other budget workshops before that. Is that, are we just planning on?
Having. That, that is on the, um, Audit and Finance calendar that we scheduled those then.
In your, your question, your question is?
Are we only planning on having two budget workshops in the next year? Since we're talking about this whole budget workshop thing.
Right, right.
Those are the, I believe, board workshops as a whole that are on that calendar. Um, the budget workshops are on the budget calendar, which goes to the board, um, later in the fall.
Okay.
So they, they, the budget workshops come before the regularly scheduled Cal meetings that are on that schedule. Um, and so we just feather those in with the regularly scheduled Cal dates.
Okay. But then we just list a couple in here just to list a couple?
Well, those, uh, those aren't, um, let me go pull up the document here. Um, you're talking about the, uh, the actual board retreats?
No, no, no.
Oh, the, okay.
She's talking about actual budget workshops. And I think she's asking that maybe we could have more than just two.
Yeah. So there is kind of an optional at that May 11th, 2026, just like the, the circumstance for the day. Um, you know, the, the May one was kind of as, as needed budget workshop, and we just didn't have any new information to share. Um, so on the budget calendar, we still have that one referenced as an as needed. I see what you're saying now. I, I pulled it up.
Yeah, Ms. Jewett, also on February 9th, we've scheduled, you know, a board retreat there, which is a time we could discuss the, the budget, um, as well. But, you know, we plan to, as, as early as January, build some pieces in, um, like we've tried to do this.
build some pieces in, like we've tried to do this year to get feedback from the board. But there is that board retreat on February the night.
Where it could be a topic.
Yes, ma'am, for sure.
The other thing I think we need to realize is that budget development takes a lot of parts and pieces here. And if you're working on central staff, you're working in ways that you're using the current budget and you're thinking about.
And she was asking.
As student achievement comes in or damages to facilities come in, that it's a process. And one thing you don't want to, I mean, it takes time for some of these budget concerns to emerge and.
Like income from property taxes.
Exactly. So you've got to look at the parts. There's a rhythm to this budget that in September you would not. There may be a couple of things that you might be looking at, like summer school for first and second graders.
Well played, Dr. Temple.
Other things emerge over time. And 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 I want to say from central staff, having worked, you don't want to spend your whole time thinking about the budget. It's very, it's a very anxious time for staff to be thinking about this. You want to do the work that you need to get done and make the projections that seem reasonable. So, you know, as a board, I don't think we want to spend our whole time, the whole year, working on budget things because we need to, we need to focus our work on what schools do and need to do. If that all makes sense.
It does.
And that's why we have the Audit and Finance Committee.
That's right. And I'm really grateful for that because whereas we certainly can discuss mitigation strategies as an example in the public arena, I think that's better discussed, given its complexities in one-on-one with the CFO because of the back and forth. I think we as stewards, the public dollars, want to make good use of the public's time around the discussions in the public domain. So I appreciate that a lot, Dr. Temple, because it is an incredibly busy time right now in this season in school districts. But for this board calendar, we did put two board retreats on here so you could plan around that, starting at one o'clock on the eighth and one o'clock on February the ninth. And outside of that, the cascade is as it typically is. Any other questions?
The word, sorry, the word retreat bothers me. I think it's, it's a, it seems like we're going to the poolside having drinks. If it's a workshop, let's actually call it a workshop. Is this not allowed?
We can call it whatever the majority of the board wishes. They've always been called board retreats, Ms. Lieber.
It's a checklist, too, that calls it a, asks us to schedule so many board retreats. But that doesn't mean a workshop can't be a part of the retreat.
Yeah, I just think it gives a bad impression to call it a retreat. That sounds like fun. Maybe so.
Well, a critically important part of board governance is team building. And so I think it's called a retreat because of part of the work that you all do is supposed to be building team and understanding roles. And but we can call it workshop, we can call it whatever you all prefer. And we're not stuck on retreat, that's for sure.
I do think, and I, and this may be within my powers of it, the creating an ad hoc. I do think the board needs to be more involved in determining what is discussed at these retreats and at the board, you know, whether it's a workshop. Because I think that's the trouble we have with the word retreat.
Might I suggest, rather than an ad hoc committee, we ask our superintendent, who is to plan these, to send out a survey, just like we've sent out surveys before for times, dates, this, that, and the other, of upcoming topics that will affect the reading, the writing, the arithmetic, the future of our students in the classrooms. And we can shape, help shape the retreat with our input and then with the knowledge of staff knowing what we need to hear.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. I, we, that's really, I think, best practice for that, for these. And it's, for example, the agenda last time included things like charter schools because the majority of trustees said we won't feed back on charter schools. And so that's how we typically arrange the agendas for those days. And it's something I'm committed to doing because input is critically important.
But that, but I still go back to that if we're going to do these retreats and workshops, and it's for the board's benefit, the board should be directing what the agenda is. And I don't see that.
The board does direct the agenda through the survey completion for those trustees that have the opportunity to complete it. Then we work with the senior staff to build consensus around the items on that we get feedback on from the trustees that complete the surveys.
Fair, fair enough.
Thanks.
So it's up to us to complete.
It's up to us, up to complete the surveys. It's up to us, fair enough.
Any other questions?
I guess with that, in the retreats, I would ask that maybe there is some time given for us to have some team building because I do think that the last one, there was no time. We have so many presentations and so much thrown at us that we never had real time for us to actually collaborate. I mean.
We had the puzzles, we had the team building.
It started off with team building.
I think I was late. Because I work full-time and have two kids.
Yeah, I believe, I understand.
I have to attend as much as I possibly can.
I'm right there with you. I understand. We will, we will absolutely positively do that, Ms. Jewett. We're committed to that. Thank you for that.
I like that we have the dates for the retreat on the calendar because now we know.
And also, correct me if I'm wrong, this is one of the first years we only have one combined Cal and Board. That's great.
It's all there for you, Mr. Grabowski.
That's great.
So I'll call for the vote, please, Ms. Bulse. And the motion passes. We're on to Item 6B. "I move to advance the proposed Early College High School twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic calendar to the May nineteenth Board of Trustees Meeting for Approval." Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Dr. Temple. Ms. Denny, if you would like to explain that to those that.
Absolutely. The proposal seeks to maintain Early College's unique one hundred and ninety-day academic calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Early College's calendar was first adopted in the twenty twenty-one school year and eliminates many of the gaps between TTC and Charleston County School District's academic calendars. Those are discussed in detail in the attachment at board docs. Additionally, Early College's calendar creates a fifth term that allows ECHS juniors and selected seniors to further access TTC courses during its May master course.
Thank you. Are there questions about the Early College calendar? Ms. Bailey or Ms. Roberson?
No.
Okay, any others?
Has there been any surveys of that population on this particular?
I will let our principal and Ms. Denny address that. We are kind of locked in because of the curriculum, but you're the professionals.
Right, we have surveyed our staff before, but more or less, once you look at Trident Tech's calendar and the CCSD calendar, there's very few options in terms of moving days around.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reese, we know the day's been long, sir. Barrett Reese, the esteemed principal at Early College High School. So thank you for being here. It's really late.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Then we'll call for the vote. There we go. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Denny. We are on to Item 6C. "I move, I make a move to, this is not, move the calendar options A, B, and C forward for public input through a survey on the CCSD website. The public input survey will be open from May the fourteenth to the twenty twenty-five through May the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at five P.M. And we, this motion directs staff to report the survey results to the board at the Cal on June the ninth, twenty twenty-five, at the regularly call meeting on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five for action in approving the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar." Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Ms. Denny?
Maggie, would you mind pulling up the slides? So at this point, many of our board members are very familiar with the academic calendar process. Maggie, if you could advance to Slide three, please, I would be grateful. So in twenty twenty-three, following the adoption of the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, in twenty twenty-three, the committee was formed, and that was the first year that we had a committee that was comprised of teachers, administrators, parents, and district staff. That initial year, the committee surveyed the public. Over five thousand survey responses garnered for us some of the things that the community preferred to see in an academic calendar in general. So that community survey in twenty twenty-three was not about any one specific calendar. It was about general preferences. So the committee met this year again, and we started in January, and they used the preferences that were gleaned from the twenty twenty-three community-wide survey to inform some of the decisions that they made in the development of each of these drafts, A, B, and C. So work groups met, they determined what kinds of calendars they wanted to develop. And that was, those calendars were selected just sort of by a casual vote amongst the work group. Then they broke apart into three groups, and each group developed one draft to submit to the group as a whole. The committee sent to internal CCSD offices, including H R, including finance, and including assessment and accountability, all three calendars, oh, I'm sorry, also including ops, to say, hey, are any of these calendars calendars that would not be feasible for one reason or another that had to do with the operations of the district? Once we received clearance from those departments, we then select, selected stakeholders to review the calendars, drafts, and provide feedback. Those select stakeholders were all of our Teachers of the Year, all of our principal cabinet members, all of our School Improvement Council chairs, and all of our constituent board members. So it was a pretty wide group that represented both parents and educators, both administrators and teachers. And so they provided feedback. The committee made edits depending upon their feedback, and that's what brings us here to talk to you tonight. So the process has been rather extensive. Pending your approval this evening, we'll launch into a public survey. I'd like to say for the public's benefit that that survey is not intended to be a vote. It's intended to provide you, the trustees, with input in making your final decision on the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar. And we expect that trustees will make that decision at the June Board of Trustees meeting. I'd like to thank the committee members. And I'd like to just go ahead and share a little bit with you about the committee. We had three members comprising the executive committee. Maggie, if you could advance the next two, two slides. Those three members worked with each of the work groups to ensure that the work groups were really community-driven and committee-driven. We had one parent, one teacher, and one administrator. You can see the composition of each of the work groups. We had twenty-one members join the work groups, and so it was a rather diverse group. State requirements are outlined in Section fifty-one dash one, four, two, five. I will not bore the trustees by outlining all of those, however they are on the screen. And for members of the public watching, they are in the board docs presentation. The committee also decided on some universal features. And so you'll see in the presentation each of the calendars. And Maggie, I think we can move to the video and so that the trustees can hear directly from the committee members. Bless you.
By joining the team, I learned a lot about the calendar. Because you can talk until you get in that particular predicament. You don't know anything that they got these, they can't do this. And so it was a wonderful experience.
We know that we don't want to start school on a Monday or a Friday. And that's all across all the calendars. So we just noticed that there are consistencies throughout the years so we can bring that in and narrow it down.
It's similar to the calendars that we have this year and for the next academic calendar. That was our, our task was to make a calendar that was similar to those two. And we did move spring break a bit earlier than it was this year.
First of all, it shows that there is a want for that calendar, that it's been voted several times.
We tried to plan in some three-day weekends and a couple of four-day weekends so that we could allow both the teachers to have the time that they needed to work on report cards and work on their work when students aren't present, but also to give the kids a time to refresh.
So to have it at the end of the third quarter and have that clean stretch run. You know, I'm a parent of an elementary, middle, and high school student, and everyone's on a different schedule. But for the high school specifically, once you hit the fourth quarter, graduation is right near, prom season, playoff season, and athletics, end of the year performances for fine arts.
If you look at the data, you have more teachers, are students missing days in October, and usually before spring break. And it depends on how spring break falls on the calendar. So we noticed that this, these two particular times, they need a break.
We specifically tried to place some extra-long weekends in around the month of October, and then also some in March and April. We find, I know as a teacher in the district, that that. district, that's one time we feel a lot of fatigue as teachers, and our students also, families have said the same thing. So when our group was discussing where we wanted it, it was interesting to hear actually all the stakeholder groups, parents, community members, everyone kind of said, man, October is one of those times where just, you can use an extra-long weekend.
What I really enjoy this year specifically has been, for me personally, I would pick any three of the options that we have.
The committee is always open to volunteers. It's always, information is provided to the district families, employees, they can volunteer to be on the committee.
It's so important, in my opinion, that because we're listening to the teachers and the admin in the building, that that is going to be the best thing for the students.
With that, trustees, I know you've already reviewed each of the calendars, you've reviewed the comparison document. I'll open it to question.
Are there questions? I think our questions will come after the survey, probably, but are there questions now? Ms. Jewett?
I was wondering if we can have, like, a summary of what they said that the differences are of the calendars. Just, you know. Exactly what they said, but maybe written down for us?
Absolutely. That's on slide 12.
Do we have that presentation?
Yeah, it's on the, it's in the PowerPoint.
Right.
Go to slide 12.
Where's the PowerPoint?
It should be, it should be in board docs. You also have a comparison document. It might be more easily seen on the comparison document, which is on slide 12.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Go on down. It's slide 12.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Jewett? Any other questions or comments?
Just, just for clarification, I know I counted three more half-days or early-release days, and I think in your email you said two. Is that, is that correct?
Are you talking about calendar A, B, or C?
No, it was, sorry, my apologies. It was reflection from the year before, and that we gained three more half-days and early-release days.
Absolutely. Let me just pull up my comparison document. So if you look at the comparison document for the 25-26 calendar, you'll see that that calendar indicates seven early-release days, whereas the 24-25 calendar indicates four. So the calendar with the greatest number of early-release days is Draft A. And in that case, there are six early-release days. Draft B and C have five. So I'm looking at the document that you have up on the screen.
I think, I need to see the document, I guess. Because I thought it was the year before we added more early-release days and half-days, I mean, to this new year, and both.
This one year where we had seven.
So you have the 24-25 view and the 25-26 adopted calendar, and then, and those are both the columns that are highlighted in green. The columns that are not highlighted in green are each of the drafts that we're proposing tonight.
So I think what I'm trying to say is, when we did this survey, when we were only at seven early-release days and half-days, and then we're continuing to increase those numbers without reflecting in a new survey.
This survey hadn't gone out yet.
We're doing a new survey. Maybe that's my misunderstanding. But we're doing a survey of what we're presenting, not a survey on people's opinion of having more half-days and early-release days. So I'm concerned that we're, we're not giving the public something that they reacted to in 2023, and we're just continuing to pile more early-release and half-days on them without a new survey, I mean, like a deep-dive survey, and yet we're not, we're not providing a, an option that goes back to 23-20, or excuse me, 23-25, 24-25, or 23-24. So, I mean, so it seems like we're, we're moving the ball, and we're not really going back to our constituents and asking about these half-days and these early-release days. And from a parent perspective, I.
There's a lot.
I, I just, I'm highly concerned. I mean, okay, transparency. When it came to half-days, I didn't even send my kid to school. I'm like, are you kidding me? So I changed that, obviously, when I had some concerns, because he was getting sick too much, but I, I just kind of look at this as we should be giving the parents an option.
So I think that's a great question, and the committee also considered that question. So initially, when we did the community survey to ascertain preferences, that was in the spring of 2023. So since then, the committee has designed the 24-25 calendar and the 25-26 calendar. So we have not even fully completed the first calendar year that the committee has designed. So we felt like if we were to ascertain preferences again after just two years ago, that the data might not reflect anything different, because we haven't lived through the calendars yet that the committee developed. And so we thought that it might be appropriate for the committee to develop another survey next year to ascertain preferences, so that we'd have a three-year gap in between a preference survey.
I guess to say that I feel like the ball is moving to increase half-days and early-release days and not reflecting on what they created in 2023, or what was spoke to in 2023, and I just.
I appreciate that. So I don't have the 2023, 22, 20, 23, 24 numbers in front of me. However, my recollection is that there were more early-release days in 23-24, which is what brought the committee to decide that there should be no more than six in any of the drafts that we're presenting for 26-27.
But we have, we do have more than six. We're looking at eight between half, it'd be better if they were.
They're not in the green, go to the white.
So I'm referring to early release, not half-days.
Yeah, I'm considering them both of the same category, so.
So that might be where the discrepancy is.
I mean, when I, the half-days are three, and then you add, and you continue to add more, so you're looking at one, Group A has nine, Group B has eight, and Group C has eight. And yet, in 2024, you're looking at seven. I'm just saying, it just seems to be increasing.
May I ask for a definition that might help? The difference between a half-day and an early release?
10:30 or 12:30.
So a half-day decreases the instructional day by three hours. An early-release day decreases the instructional day by not more than three hours.
Just for the clarity, I don't know that, to the parent, they feel that nuance of early-release to half-days.
We dread the 10:30. It's, it's a dreaded day to have to wake up at 6:00 AM, to send your kid to school till 10:00 AM. You can't work. You can't do anything. You can't get anything done. That is pretty much every parent's perspective on that day.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we, tonight's vote would approve us to distribute the survey to get preferences on calendar A, B, or C. Why don't we add a question about early release and, and/or half-days, or add two questions that would get some general feedback from folks? Because this is, this process, I want to thank Ms. Denny, has, is so much more transparent, involves a whole lot of people. We get more responses than ever before, and so we can sort of do a pulse check on that and tweak the calendars based on the feedback. Again, it's not a vote, as Ms. Denny suggested, but we'll get feedback from the public and add that to the survey before we distribute it.
One more question.
Sure.
How is the committee decided and created? And then is there an ability for a board member to become part of that committee, so that maybe we have a little bit of a voice in what the calendars end up looking like? Because basically, you know, we've got one, three options, and that's, you know, as board members, we don't really have a say.
Sure. So how are, how are the committee members chosen? They're self-selected. In 23, when we sent out the calendar, we also said, anybody that's like, that would like to be a part of this committee, please email us, call us, let us know. And so we had an overwhelming response. I think that first year, it was like 56 individuals who volunteered. Every time we send a calendar out, we invite folks to join. So I'll get emails, usually when we publish the drafts, I'll, I'll get emails that say, hey, can I join the calendar committee? And I'll file those away and store them, and the next time we get ready to start a new committee, I'll reach out to those folks and say, you know, we're starting a new committee, would you like to be a part of it? And also, by the way, anybody else who'd like to join us, please let us know, too. As far as trustees serving on the committee, my recommendation, if you're asking for my recommendation, would be that trustees reserve their vote for the final vote. I think if you'd like to have an opportunity to talk about what, what the characteristics are in each of the calendars, I would welcome that, for sure.
But I guess it doesn't give us the, the ability to help kind of create something that we might feel would be, you know. We're, you know, we, we just are now given information as opposed to being a part of helping make that decision in order to be able to, informatively. And we do have teachers and parents on the board, so there might be some informed opinion from the board to be able to give to this committee, to be able to also then bring, you know, just like finance and policy and everything else, you know, be representative to that.
I don't, I don't think, yeah, I see a serious, I mean, that would require a policy. I think your, your board powers, your board responsibilities are covered within our board policy be. So for the board to be actively involved in a community action like that, I, I think you, yeah, the integrity of the process is to have the community and the committee develop this for board consideration. I think you would be, I don't know, infecting the integrity by adding board members to a committee like that without a policy.
I don't think, I'm sure Ms. Denny would be open to any sort of suggestion and feedback and dialogue. She's usually pretty good to work with.
What, what question is some of the early?
I don't know why that was so funny.
We think she's pretty good, too, Ms. Wylie. Sorry, we couldn't help it.
I just looked over at her, everybody's laughing, though. I didn't want to try to be funny.
Well, it's getting late. I'm trying to move us along. Are some of the half-days and early-release days used for teachers to have professional development? And I think it might be important for that to be made known as well.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I've, I've just heard so many complaints about early release. I mean, it just, I don't see why you can't combine them somehow into a full day, because there's no question, when you have an early release, my neighborhood's full.
It was last year we had that, that big debate and discussion around their early release.
Well, how does absentee, I mean, I think the question we're asking, maybe, is how's absenteeism on early-release days compare to attendance on half-days versus whole-days? You know, as, if I was speaking as a parent, all these half-days and early-release days would drive me nuts. So trying to keep up with it. Now, I like the calendar having the, the spring break at the end of third quarter. I like some kind of consistency there with thinking about planning, you know, that aspect of it, because I'd be that parent who'd want to take their kid somewhere. So like to plan that way. But I, I think, you know, maybe we could look at, you know, how does absenteeism relate to early release and half-days? And is there some way to, you know, mitigate that, especially if it's, if it's high? We're hearing that parents know it's an early-release day, and they're like, okay, I'm kissing off that day. I'm not, you know, going to try to struggle to get daycare or childcare if I'm working or whatever. I just know I'm going to play the whole day and might as well do it. I, I think there's some considerations there that we need to make.
We appreciate that, Dr. Temple. We will, we will add this to the, to the survey. We will send it out, and then we will bring recommendations to the board based on the feedback. As a matter of fact, you're just exactly right, that absenteeism is higher on early-release days and half-days than on other days, just because of some of the challenges that Ms. Jewett suggested that she, as a working mother, has. So, so we will, if the vote by the majority is to approve the, these calendars to go out for survey, we'll include that, that question, and then make some adjustments.
Can we have that data?
We, we provide all the data to the trustees, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
What day specifically there's absentee?
Oh, we, yes, we could, we could run those reports and provide them in a board brief, sure.
Ms. Hawkins, may I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Roberson.
I know you're all trying to wind up to go home. But Ms. Denny, I've not seen, I've not taken one of these surveys. Is there a question in the survey to determine who's completing it, not by name, but by district?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the, the, the calendar determination is not being made by a majority in one particular area? Do you have a, a range of constituents or families returning it? Because, again, my concern would be the amount or lack of return of surveys from my rural district.
Yes, ma'am. So you will have information when you make your, your final decision, when the trustees make their final decision on the 26-27 calendar. You'll have information about how many individuals from each area responded to the survey.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if you, if you look at last, when we last went through that, that was a big issue when it came into going and adding that spring, I mean, that October vote. I mean, not vote, God, it's getting like, rake, because it did seem like there was a couple districts that were pushing that hard, but it still went into our consideration at the end of the day. So I, I do think when we looked at the survey data last time, we could tell which districts were pushing hard for certain issues that didn't, once we had the discussion amongst ourselves and with staff, it led to a different determination.
Okay, yes. Just wanted to make sure that we still have that data. Thank you.
I have another thought, and that is, like, if we look at, we're looking at this and we're discussing half-days and early-release days, we don't have an option that would show, well, maybe it comes after. well, maybe it comes after. If the survey shows that parents really don't like a lot of the early release um, days, then we need to bring the calendar committee back together to come up with the fourth option.
I imagine that's how, how the process will unfold.
Okay.
So, or, or Dr. Temple, incomplete transparency, if it, if that's the result, we, we could cut half of the early release days on, on the options that exist. I don't want to make the, the, the process too cumbersome. You know, the survey is to get feedback from the public, so I think we can use the feedback from the public to make the adjustments and bring, bring it to the board. And if the board's still not satisfied with it based on the data that we provide to you, you say, hey, start this over again. Because again, we're the first district, I think, in the state that will get out our calendar for 26, 27 this early, right? We try to do it for transparency and to work with the public and to, and, and to do all the things that people seem to appreciate. Um, but, but we certainly have some time.
I appreciate the complexity of this.
Yeah, it's very com, it's very complex, as you can tell.
We will, we will call for the vote. Ms. Bailey, how do you vote? Never mind, Ms. Bowles has it. Thanks. And the motion passes unanimously. Um, Ms. Bowles, do you have, and check me, an account of the motions that had a unanimous vote that will go on the consent agenda?
Okay.
For A, for B, and then six A, B, and C?
Okay.
All right. All right, I move. Um, we are on now item 6D. Um, I move to advance the agenda items for A, for B, 6A, 6B, and 6C to the May 19th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call for the vote. And the motion passes. Um, item 7A, the upcoming meetings, Board of Trustees this Monday, the 19th, June 4th Audit and Finance, June 9th Committee of the Whole, June 23rd Board of Trustees. And Ms. Roberson, I've not forgotten your question at the beginning of the meeting. We will receive an email with an answer in it.
This is.
Um, is there a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole meeting?
I move.
All in favor, stand.